Blue house.
Yeah.
Don't look too closely at my front yard. I have not eaten in a long time.
We're out, we're out one.
Okay.
I think that's the... You feel deliberately neglected at that point.
That's still six fifty-nine, so we've got a little bit of time. What do you need?
I did not bring...
As a matter of fact, if you wanted to do all the... Anytime you want to grab it, you latch right onto it.
That's right.
And Al's got enough to share.
You do? Oh, yeah, you do. How many trees is that, man?
And it's all dated like ten years.
Right?
You're the only name I recognize on.
I'm the last man standing. Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the planning board meeting, September seventh. We have seven o'clock for one on the cell phone. And let me get the proper page here. Okay. Like to open the meeting with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, into a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is roll call. Ron Prowitz here.
Carolyn Light here.
Emily Shemshini here.
Uriel here.
Keith Endolo here.
Wales here.
Okay, thank you. Re-roll call for October fifth, twenty twenty-two. Ron Prowitz, I plan to attend.
Light, yes?
Shemshini, yes?
Uriel, yes.
Keith Endolo, plan to attend?
Wales, yes.
Thank you. Approval of minutes for the August third, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. And we have a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes of the August third, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
I'm sorry, I overstepped a little bit. Is there any discussion, board members? I see no hands, no response. Thank you, Emily. Sorry to interrupt.
Carolyn, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Prowitz, yes.
Light, yes?
Endolo, yes.
Shemshini, yes?
Uriel, yes. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Looking for an advisory opinion, the town council. Amendments to the zoning ordinance, district use table, appendix A, zoning, chapter one thirty-four, section five, filed on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The proposed attendant, excuse me, amendment would establish use code one forty-four, commercial water distribution center, proposed by Thomas J., I hope I pronounce this correctly, Burns, Jr., petitioner. Planning board discussions. Do we have an applicant?
There is an applicant in attendance. This is Tolly Gillette, town planner.
Okay, thank you. Please.
You could just state your name for the record.
Leah Beaulieu.
It was Leah, L-E-A-H.
L-E-A-H, yes.
Thank you.
You can begin your presentation.
Yeah, I'm going to brief review, thank you.
Okay. I'm guessing you all had a chance to review the packet. I know it was a little large and a lot of information there. What we are looking to do, and I also have an additional addendum to the request, to define it a little bit further and narrow the definitions now down to understand exactly what we're trying to do. I have copies for all of you if you'd like a copy of the definitions. I don't know if you want them now.
Sure.
And these haven't been approved by the town council yet. They haven't been reviewed by them, right?
The definitions?
Thank you. Thank you.
So I'm sure upon looking at the definition of commercial water distribution center, some of you may think that we're trying to put buildings on the property. We're trying to bring in a bunch of commercial enterprises in trucks, and that's not exactly what we're trying to do at all. I'm also open to suggestions as to a different name for the district use table. If you wanted to call it a distribution system or center, center kind of makes it seem like there's going to be a lot of movement and a lot of people coming and going. This is a property where there's a well that was hydrofract, and it pumps enough water out of it, approved by the Department of Health, as well as the Department of Environmental Management, as I'm sure you saw all of the documents approving it, as well as the ecosystems and the water, the tables on top of it. They have trucks. Jeff Ben takes water from the well, then in turn goes and delivers the water to residential and commercial areas for pools, hot tubs, any type of bulk water situation. If you're running out of water and you want to rent a cistern, we'll come in, we'll give you the cistern, we'll also come and fill the cistern as many times as you need. If you need extra water to do your flowers because your well doesn't pump out enough, we'll come and fill a cistern and give you extra water for that, or any other types of tanks that you need it for. The purpose of it is just taking the water from the well and distributing to consumers privately. Originally, back in two thousand and nine, the owner had tried to apply for a public water system, went through all of A, B, C, and D. Eventually, Hoppington said, we're all set. We don't want a public water system now, but thank you. Recently, in the twenty twenty, twenty nineteen area, I would say there was a big drought. The drought was not just us, it was everywhere. Everybody was dry, right? They've been pumping out of here for several years. There's never been any problems. There are only, at that time in twenty nineteen, I believe, seven trucks, only five trucks, only three of them were able to fit down the road due to the way the road is actually manufactured. We understand that people are concerned with their well allegedly being dried up due to us taking water out of this well. I would argue that just because somebody says their well went dry during a drought doesn't necessarily mean that it should automatically be put on us, especially since there's never been any other complaints of it on top of it. But what I'm here to ask for is to approve or recommend, for your opinion, that this get approved by the town council, and also to look for your guidance as to what types of questions or concerns that you might have that I can fix and address before we get to the town council meeting in order to kind of dissipate any of those, the future concerns. Same thing with the name of, of the actual district use label, up to interpretation of however you would like to label it. And I did also put in there a proposed district use table, I'm sure you saw, where it lists out which sections, you know, are eighty or vacant, are allowed to use this type of district use. That's also, I would leave to your interpretation as well, to say whether or not it would be permitted or not permitted. I'm not one to decide that because I don't do the planning board. So really, it would, it would be helpful to get some guidance as to what your concern is, or any other questions to try to get this approved and move forward with, with the council meeting in October.
My first question is, you, oh, are you, are you finished?
Yeah.
You said this would be for private distribution. Now, the fact that Jeff Ben takes the water and sells it to people with pools and stuff, that's not private. That's a service that he provides for pay. It's a commercial...
It's commercial, correct. Yes. The land, the land is...
Seems to be kind of contradictory, in my, in my view.
I guess my point behind that was, we tried to make the well originally for public distribution and were denied that way back in two thousand and nine. So now we're asking to allow the owner of the property to do it commercially to other enterprises, specifically Jeff Ben is the only one that comes in and out of there, to him to further his business and fill the water.
So what you're telling us is that this is actually occurring now?
No. No, there was a cease and desist in twenty twenty, September of twenty twenty, that, I don't know if you have a copy of it, but there was one, because people were complaining about trucks coming in and out and the water being taken and allegedly drying up wells.
Is that without the, the approval of the town this was going on?
So this was...
Freelance?
Several years back.
So it still continues today?
No, no. After the cease and desist, we stopped. Because there was complaints about it, and the best way to do it would be to get the district use added to the table in order to allow us to do it.
Okay.
From, from twenty twenty until now, there have been no trucks going in there getting water?
There had been trucks coming in and out.
That's my understanding.
But then...
This has been called recently.
They were. They were called recently. And once I had spoken to Santilli, we had discussed it and decided that this is the route that we were going to go and continue to do it that way. My issue with the cease and desist is it references the letter from two thousand and thirteen, which talks about having buildings on the property and has nothing to do with hauling water. It talks about not having buildings on the property. So the cease and desist said, stop hauling water, you're in violation of the two thousand and thirteen letter, which tells you not to put buildings on the property. As an attorney, that's conflicting because it's not even referencing what we're doing and what you're telling us to stop doing. It's, you're telling us to stop putting buildings on the property.
I don't play poker. Boo. Sorry that I had that revelation tonight. I'm, I'm, wow. You can continue.
I'm just not quite sure what you mean by that.
I mean, how awful that, based on the legal interpretation, this, 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 the town said, no, thank you. You know, we don't need your water services. And somebody decided, well, if you don't need my water services, I'm going to give them to somebody else, so I'm going to do it, knowing that there's no, there's no legal route for that to occur in Hoppington. And if that were the case, and if that were okay, and if a cease and desist letter were inappropriate, then every other commercial businessman, and there have been, who've considered using the aquifers in Hoppington for commercial purposes, would have gone ahead and done it, and you guys wouldn't be sitting here today. That's, that's it. That's, that's, that's it. It wasn't legal. It was, in my mind, an ignorant decision to go ahead and start hauling water out of a community's natural resource. I can't cut down trees in my neighborhood without coming to the town. And here we're talking about this other natural resource. I'm really disappointed. I had no idea that that was the status of this. This is like a, okay, let's pick up where we left off so we can continue to do what we were doing, which we weren't supposed to do. It's just disappointing. I don't, I don't teach my children.
Okay. Well, I would like to mention first that I was not a part of any of that.
That's okay.
And I just...
You're still a lawyer representing.
I don't want to get into the argument of what we're pulling when it comes to the aquifer and resources. This well is on a vacant commercial lot.
Let's have a technical question for you.
Isn't it an RFR eighty lot? Isn't that zoned RFR eighty?
It is R, yes. It is R...
That's not a commercial.
...vacant, vacant, commercial.
It's not vacant, commercial. It's RFR eighty.
That's residential.
Residential.
I apologize. Yes, residential. I originally was going to try and ask...
We're not going to argue semantics here. You know, it's zoned...
I don't want to argue semantics.
It's, it's zoned what it's zoned.
It is.
And you keep saying it's vacant, commercial. It's not vacant, commercial.
Vacant, residential, correct. Yes.
So there was never any authority for anybody to take one thirty thousand gallon truck out of there? Here's a technical question for you. On their best day, how many trucks? You said four, five, three, four, three, four, five. How many commercial trucks were hauling water out of there? And you want to expand this into a bigger operation to expand or improve someone else's business. You said that earlier. So how many commercial trucks are going to be running in and out of there hauling water at thirty thousand gallons each, right? Because a truck is then going to go out half empty because somebody needs, you know, fifty gallons for a hot tub. It's not going to happen that way, so...
The truck doesn't fit thirty thousand gallons.
We had thirty thousand gallons dumped in my pool from a truck. It was very cool to watch.
And guess whose truck it was?
Maybe multiple trucks.
Whose truck it was? It was somebody from Cumberland.
Oh, I thought you said Davey Ben brought it.
No, 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 no.
Sorry. I apologize.
We bought our water in Cumberland. Had I known there was somebody selling cheap water in Hoppington, I would have done it that way.
The largest tanker truck that is, that is owned by the company is eight thousand. The trucks that are go, can or would be able to go in and out, there's only three of them. There's seven thousand gallon, as well as the fifty-five hundred, or the five thousand and... Two sevens and one five.
Excuse me, if you're going to be speaking, I'm going to ask you to come to the podium, state your name for the record, and then speak, please.
Thank you.
I don't see a very efficient operation in having, you know, ten, seven, just go, let's go ten or, or three ten thousand dollar, uh, ten thousand gallon trucks go fill up somebody's pool. So I'm, I'm, my question is, you know, at, at this, this is what the current situation looks like, if this were to go forward and the expansion were to occur, and you're going to put your little water silos up, or whatever the case may be, what are the trucks going to look like? How much traffic is there going to be? Are there going to be big boy trucks? Or are they going to stay the truck sizes that you have now? I mean, if you're going to be hauling more water, I would think you would... So from a technical...
We, we don't. We're not going to be hauling more water. We're not going to be putting any more trucks in or out. It's not an expansion. It's just, it's just a request to continue, a request to have those specific trucks, which is where I ask guidance for definitions as well, those specific trucks to go in and pump water to fill them. I mean, at most, you're going to have seven fourteen, nineteen thousand come out of there with the three trucks. It's approved to do thirty thousand a day. We wouldn't, we have, there, there wouldn't be any way that we would do that, that much in a day. If I could get your records of that, I, I would.
I might just interject a quick thought here. I think actually, this is all really helpful context for why we're seeing this proposed amendment, but I don't think that our decision necessarily bears on their particular project, right? Like, we're talking about amending the district use table for the entire town, which actually is a bigger deal to me, because this means that it wouldn't be just this particular resident allowed to do this with their property. It would be anyone.
That's what I...
And that's what concerns me most. I think our, I would love to have a conversation about the implications of that.
Well, that's where we should go with it then, because the reality of the situation is, you know, solar, no solar. We got it, or we don't got it. So we don't got it now. And this is the same scenario, and it's a natural resource, and...
And that's why I would defer to the board when it came to the district use table, to decide who has it by permit, who has it by right, who can and cannot have it. I would, I would defer to the board on that, because I wouldn't be the one to decide whether or not it would be allowed for some other type of property that isn't considered the one that I'm focused on now. You know, and that's why I had put in my proposal either special use permit required or by right, but deferring to the board to choose which one they believe would be right.
Also, right now, this isn't in the district use table at all, correct?
It is not.
It is not, no.
Yes, but the distinction between a special use permit and permitted by right already presumes that it's going to be an acceptable use. I think we're taking one step further back in saying, is this something that we want in our community? Not whether we're going to allow it by special use permit or permitted by right. So we have to start the discussion that far back.
Right.
So as to your question, which certainly was at the top of my agenda, maybe I could just impose on our solicitor. So Maggie, once we put this in the district use table, there's really no way to say to party A, yes, you can do it, but party B, no, you can't. Or am I mistaken? Is there a mechanism for that? Because in essence, that's what the applicant is requesting.
Is that working?
So the proposal is to add the use to the table of uses, and it is proposed across a variety of zones. And once you add that use to those zones, anyone in one of those zones absolutely has the right to come forward. And unless it says it's not permitted in that particular zone. So you have a proposal here that in a residential zone, that by special use permit, this commercial business would be allowed to operate. So one of the things that you want to think about when you're reviewing this, is that consistent with the comprehensive plan to have commercial uses in residential zones? And are you opening up a Pandora's box by allowing an intensive commercial use in a residential zone? And what other types of uses might you get requests for? Currently allowed in the residential zone are residential uses, and there's a reason for that. And that's why we have residential zones, commercial zones, and industrial zones, and manufacturing. So you want to focus on whether or not the proposed use would be appropriate for a residential zone, because that's where this particular applicant is also coming from. We're not talking about zoning this particular property, but that is the impact here, that this would be allowed by special use permit in a residential zone. So you want to think about the big picture of that when you're reviewing this.
Okay, thank you. All right. So to me, that's a very simple question. The answer's no.
Yes.
It doesn't even speak to the issue of the natural resource conundrum. Or as I, as I considered this application, I couldn't help but draw the analogy to somebody who decided to come before us and wanted to suck the oxygen out of their, the air around their property. It's like, well, yes, it, it's a natural resource. It's like our topsoil and our stone wall. It doesn't necessarily mean that people can just take it away for, for, well, I don't know, for free, for the taking. That's a, that's a deeper question, one that I'm not prepared to wrestle with right now, but that's certainly weighing on my mind. But in terms of the residential zone, I do not believe that this is the type of use that belongs in a residential district.
If the option exists for the applicant to change the zoning, there would be a different application for that. So we're saying no to residential.
This isn't an application for whether or not they can operate. This is an application for whether or not we want commercial water distribution on the table.
True.
Bingo.
And I'm going to go one higher than what Al said. I don't want it in Hoppington at all, or, you know, at all. I don't, I don't, we don't let people take the dirt. We, you know, we make sure it stays on the property when, when they move stuff around, and we're not going to, I, I can't, I'd be hard pressed for somebody to convince me why this would be acceptable in accordance with, like, as I go down the list of purposes for zoning ordinances, I, I can't find anything that it even aligns with, let alone...
I have to agree. I mean, we have, as was stated by our solicitor, we have residential zones for a reason. We're going to let people just come in and have a commercial, it's a business. They want to come in and do a business on a, on residential property in a residential zone? No. No, there's ways to do that. And just to say, go ahead, and as it was discussed, we're opening up a big problem for the whole town, not just for this one piece of property, for the whole town. My personal opinion is, no. If there's nothing else for the planning board, we have a couple of people in the audience who would like to speak.
I just...
Do you have anything further?
No, no, I don't have anything further.
Thank you.
I have just one more thing.
Okay.
To build on what Cecil was saying, not only do I disagree with it being an allowed use in a residential zone, I think for our other zones as well, the use is likely not consistent with the comprehensive plan for a number of reasons, especially the ones related to preserving surface and groundwater resource, resources to ensure safe and adequate drinking water supplies. It's a little bit different from, you know, saying we can remove soil from a piece of property. You could, you know, draw some lines around a sandbox and remove that and put it somewhere else. But our aquifer is connected to everyone in the town. We all rely on it for our drinking water. We don't have municipal water here. So anything that taps into that and extracts it, you know, why would one person get to do that at, at length and others not have that opportunity, or have their resource diminished as a consequence? I don't think that's consistent with a lot of the natural resource goals and intentions of our comprehensive plan. So I just wanted to note that as well.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, planning board members?
Yeah.
All set? Okay, Mr. Moreau, please.
Oh, yes, Mr. Moreau.
Is, is there a problem with the way we're handling this, Ms. Moreau? He's a resident of the town. We have somebody from Florida that wants to come in and take our resources. He has the right, because he lives here.
Thank you. Joe Moreau, Old Depot Road. As the chair mentioned, I'm a concerned resident of our town. I've been seriously involved for the past few years on many different projects that affect our town. I was at the town council meeting, and I had some discussion during a public forum. Myself and one other resident spoke concerning this project. And at the end, there was one person online that wanted to speak, and I want to confirm if that was the attorney that spoke last night. Was that you that commented online? I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Yes, it was you. Okay. Thank you. Not a problem. What I said last night was that I went back and I researched the documents associated with this meeting, as I do with all planning board meetings, zoning board meetings. And one of the things that I mentioned last night was that they wanted to put a twenty by thirty block building on that property. And I spoke about other things. And the attorney, who we just heard, came back and said, no, there will be no building on that property. Well, when I researched the documents a few days ago, and again today, there's several documents, there's pictures. If you go fifteen pages in, in the left corner, it says two dash three, and it's dated October eighth, two thousand and twenty, table two, and it's capital installation budget. This is right from this document. Item number three, water treatment building, handwritten twenty by thirty. Sixty thousand dollars is budgeted for this block building. So the documents are saying there's a building. The attorney on the record last night said there will be no building, and I believe I heard tonight that it's not going to be a building. So I don't understand that. Our attorney, Seipol, last night requested a definition of this commercial water distribution center. So that's, that's where... So that's, that's where that came from. I also spoke to um, building and zoning. And I asked if I could share this information. I have six pages. I'm not going to read every one of them. But I was told I could read this. This was a, a letter from the Town of Hopkinton Building and Zoning that went to a Thomas Burns dated July 30th, 2020, concerning the Platte Lot Number, Certified Return Receipt. Dear Property Owner, please be advised that this office has received several complaints regarding your property located off Ashaway Road, Platte 25, Lot 265. In September of 2013, a zoning letter was issued by this office that the property could be utilized for agricultural purposes. The office issued an electrical permit for a new service to accommodate a blueberry farm. The alleged filling of water trucks from the well on the property is a violation of the terms and conditions of the correspondence dated September 13th, 2013. You are hereby ordered to cease all water hauling operations from the property immediately, or a municipal court summons will be issued by this office. You also have the right to appeal this decision under Section 24 of the Town Zoning Office, signed by Anthony Santilli, the building and zoning official. And from what I was told, and I, I certainly can't verify this, but I believe the source, and I think it was mentioned tonight, that water has been taken since this letter. So um, it was mentioned by several members of our planning board. We are opening Pandora's Box to do this. I've got two acres of property. I'd like to cut all the trees on my property, and I'm gonna store boats for the winter. And I'm gonna charge a fee to store those boats. And how can you tell me I can't do it if I got a special use permit change? I want to put junk fuel vehicles there and do the same thing. I agree with comments made. This is not what our town needs. I have neighbors now that are struggling with water and, and the people on uh, Egypt Street. Also in the documentation, I believe there were 22 residents listed between Egypt Street, and it has their addresses on there. Uh, one person in particular could not attend. I suggested that they speak to the residents in the neighborhood in the tent, 10, the October 3rd is a workshop that the town council has agreed to. This is not right, right for our town. And I don't know what really is gonna happen, because I hear two different stories. There's no building, but there is a building on the, on the ladder. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moreau. Mr. Gary. You rescind? Okay. Anyone else, well, with some public comment here? Anyone else in the audience wishing to have a moment? I see a gentleman in the back corner.
While he's coming up, just clarification. Did Mr. Moreau refer to a workshop on this topic?
He did.
Okay. What's the information about that?
October 3rd. So far, that's October 3rd here. Seven o'clock-ish, is that what it is?
I believe it was the, it's a, a hearing, not a, not a workshop. It's a hearing. Before the, before the town council, because they set the date for it at last night's meeting, I believe.
And, and so our advisory opinion today informs
That's correct.
The hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, per usual.
Okay, sorry, it's your turn.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
I'm Tim Gould. I reside at 30 Egypt Street, been there for 30 some years. Uh, we, uh, we are right in front or behind, whichever way you want to say, we're on the Egypt Street side. Our neighbor who couldn't be here tonight, who was at the meeting yesterday, he had his well dry up while they were pumping. And that's what he stated at yesterday's meeting. He couldn't be here tonight. He really wanted to be here tonight. But he couldn't be. And when they ceased, stopped after the second time they were told to stop, uh, he got his water back again. So he's having a problem with this pumping. Uh, the neighbor who couldn't be here next door to me, Don, Don Kinney is across the street. Uh, and he had his well dry up. He was unable to fill his pool this year for fear that he would not be able to have enough groundwater to, to take to fill his pool. So he, his pool was unusable this year. And we're very concerned about our well water. We're very concerned about the town. And I hope you reject every little bit of this. I thank you for all your concern that you've expressed about this. But this is, uh, this, as you had said, uh, as Carolyn had said, this is a commercial operation and it's residential. And this should never have started. And yet they persist. I think it's awful. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. I, I'd just like to add it. It's within their rights to request something. That doesn't mean that they're actually gonna get whatever they're requesting. Anybody can ask for anything. People, the presenters, the representatives, it's their job to sell us. They're the salesmen, we're the clients. If they can't convince us it's a good deal for Hopkinton, or if it goes against the comprehensive plan, or even just moral rights. If they fail in any of those, well, that's that. But they, they do have the right to propose these things. Where it goes from there is entirely up to the town, the town council, the planning board, and the residents. But that's pretty much my opinion. Thank you. Mr. Gary, you had your hand up again.
Good evening, planning board. Ladies and gentlemen, Michael Gary, 16 Tomahawk Road, Bradford. Mr. Chair, I don't know if you get a chance to look at the 2009 well report? It talks about the well, what it does, feet, all that. The well puts out 21, 21 gallons per minute and a maximum of 30,000 a day. And the reporter goes on to read that it was done in March, so everything's frozen, a little more condensed. So that's something I would, uh, ask the planning board to take a look at. 30,000 gallons is Karen Light's swimming pool. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Miss you, oh, this gentleman has something to say. Yeah, then we're gonna have the attorney come up and I think she has something else she wants to put forward.
My name is Josiah Tanner. I used to live in Hopkinton. I don't anymore. I'm actually a licensed well driller, pump installer. I did read over that. Now I know that's from 2009. So I would say, at the least, if you wanted to do anything, maybe retest it to find out. Sorry, I'm not a good public speaker. Um, the only thing, my concern with anyone claiming that their well has run out to any use of anyone else's well is I, I would want to see something from someone licensed that says, you know, that there was an issue with the well. I mean, you could tell me your well ran dry. But if you don't know anything about wells, is that really what's going on? Do you have other issues? Is there pump issues? Wells are all different depths around here. I mean, I lived right on Laurel Street. My well was 32 feet deep, made a ton of water. The river was right across the street. I've installed quite a few wells in the area. And actually, one of the gentlemen that is having said he had an issue, I installed his father's well in 2015 on Diamond Hill, made 100 gallons a minute. As far as the test that was done on this well, it was another company that did it. They did have four shallow wells placed around that well, which is all written up in there. When this well ran, it never affected the shallow well, the groundwater. I guess my biggest thing is whether the town wants to okay anyone using the well for commercial use like this. The well, the people that filled your pool, they may have hauled the water out of Wakefield, we'll say, because it's the closest town well. That, the Suez Water in Wakefield is seven wells on Tucker Town Road. I mean, we're not drawing this well from Cumberland, hauling it down here. The problem with getting the water to all the customers that have hot tubs and pools and everything that want it filled is it has to come from somewhere. Not everything comes out of the reservoir. Even the bottled water that they sell and you buy, it all comes out of the ground. I understand your concern for Hopkinton's use, which I completely understand everyone wanting to make sure that somebody, you're not gonna have 100 water companies down here selling all of your water. I guess basically what I'm looking for is, is there anything that you guys would say would make, like, if you set a certain amount of gallons you could haul out of there a day? Ben is not looking to haul all of their water from Ashaway. That was never their concern. What they're trying to do is break it up so that they can haul water from Cranston and Johnston and Wakefield and Ashaway. And when they go to Connecticut, they have sources in Connecticut. Because they're trying to spread it out so that they're not doing 100,000 gallons of water out of Wakefield. You know, they're trying to divide it up to keep it minimal so that they're not affecting the water table. Because the water table here isn't directly connected to the north end of the state, or the droughts in different areas change depending on where you are. I mean, this year was a pretty, pretty bad drought. I had a lot of customers that ran out of water. I also had customers with neighbors that had no issues working around the same depth. I mean, you can literally drill wells 20 feet apart, and one could be 100 feet deep and make five gallons a minute, and the other one could be 500 and make nothing. This well is set into bedrock. It's 980 feet deep. It's got 20 feet of casing. It's only four feet to bedrock, so it is sealed. It's not taking water from the shallow water table, which I know a lot of the wells on Egypt Street are dug wells, and there's some well points, some older systems that are pounded wells that are, you know, maybe 100 feet deep or a couple hundred. So there, you know, and I'm not saying that it didn't directly affect anyone's well. But without any kind of testing or documentation, I mean, we're just guessing. You know, that that was the issue. And basically, you know, I'm just, they're not looking to haul all of it out of here. We're just trying to spread it out so that it's not any one place that we draw all the water from, because we don't want to hurt the water table. You know, and Wakefield has a hard time with their water, because they also feed Narragansett and, you know, Point Judith and back up to North Kingston. So, you know, that's why we don't want to only be able to haul from there. And I'm sure most of the people here probably have swimming pools. It makes it hard for business when you have to drive to Providence to get a load of water to turn around and haul back down here, when it takes five truckloads to fill someone's swimming pool. So I just, I want to know if there's something that you guys can propose or point us in the right direction? If there's any way that we can make something like this happen? Because I know of other wells in the town that are possible of, that are high production. I mean, you guys have mills that had water and, uh, you know, other sources. But we didn't realize that we couldn't haul off of there. I mean, like you said, there's nothing that states what you can do for hauling, or so. We just want to know from you guys what it is that we need to do to do it correctly.
In a perfect world, an application with a commercial piece of property would come and ask the planning board if they could haul water. And like we're doing right now for another project, large project with many neighbors. That project will be testing their well. I doubt this well was tested, along with testing the abutters wells to find out what the impact on a commercial piece of property, that would be the approach. But this isn't a commercial piece of property, and we've been asked to give the town council our advisory opinion, which says absolutely not on residential property. So your best bet would be to apply for a zoning change and then do it the right way. Who approved that well? DEM didn't come in and say, okay, you have nothing approving this from your community, from your town. How did that happen? You know, the, these are the concerns that the abutters have, and these are the concerns that the town has. And they clearly expressed it with every cease and desist that they sent. So asking us to give a, to give you guidance on how to have a residential zone turn into a commercial water pumping station, then you may as well put gas pumps there too. You know, do what you want with your land. It, it, it's, it's residential property, and it can't happen. It just can't happen. If, so, and if it were your neighbor who wanted to put a gas pump in his next, next yard, or your neighbor who wanted to start hauling things out, you would be concerned about the impact to your property.
Can I weigh in quickly, Carolyn?
Yeah.
No? Okay, I'll weigh in for a long time then.
Go ahead.
So while I think the board appreciates a lot of the information that's been put forth, not all of it is particularly germane to what you're discussing here right now, which is not this specific project. It's, do you want to have this as a district use table within town? And if so, what parameters are you looking for for it? Frankly, the amount of water that you can draw from that well doesn't make really any difference to me at all, because the purpose of this discussion is, is this a use we want, period? Of course, if this use is allowed, whatever project you be putting forth under this would have to abide by what's established by the town council. But it, what, what you're doing here is not approving this proposal.
We're making a recommendation to the town council.
Bingo.
Okay.
And also, some of those other questions that were just raised are the types of things that might be discussed in this workshop, like
Not a workshop, though.
Or a hearing, the hearing, sorry. And like, I would imagine, and maybe we can include this in our recommendation, that, you know, we advise blah, 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 we don't, you know, what we want the district use table to look like or not look like. But if the town council wishes to proceed on this, we would strongly encourage, you know, bringing in an expert that could understand, help us understand what the impact would be if they were to decide, if the town council were to decide to make this an allowable use. Because I don't think any of us are qualified to make that decision and answer some of the questions that you raised, right?
Another element, oop, sorry, I didn't know that you were still, you might.
Go ahead.
Another element of this, of this is that, under the aquifer primary, right now it says A or M. If you were to put N there, you would be precluded from engaging in that activity anywhere in the primary zone, which is most of the town of Hopkinton. So those are also things that you'd want to start thinking about as well, just generally looking at those two elements of it as well, not just the general zoning categorizations, but also the aquifer overlay.
Okay, thank you, Talia. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I see no more hands. Ms., if you'd like to come back up, had something else you wanted to say?
Just wanted to clarify just a few, and thank you for clarifying the workshop part of it. I was a little confused about that as well. I was, I didn't know what a workshop was. So thank you for that. And I guess going off of, of what was just said, I, I personally didn't want to testify as to any of that or, or put any of that in your heads, because I don't do wells and pumps. So I wasn't able to tell you what's pulling from where, what's going dry, what's not. As far as the concern of, of the water, I do understand that that's not what's at issue. Uh, but that is what brought the issue to us in the first place. So to us, it is an issue, because we're getting blamed for something that is necessarily just an inference. Um, and it needs to be proven in order for them to blame us. But I'm just putting that out there. That's, it is a concern to us. But as far as the request for the district use table addition or amendment, my thought process behind it was to allow the board or the council to decide who could do what with it. I didn't want to specifically narrow it to just me to start, or just our property to start, because I, I thought maybe if some wanted, others wanted to do it and just have never come forward, maybe they would want to do it as well. So I was trying to make it more broad, rather than just initially applying for the change of the use of the property in general. Just, I just wanted to put that out there to say that's what I was trying to do originally. I didn't want to just make it all about our property. I was trying to include the whole town to have a say as to what they could and maybe want to do with theirs as well. So.
Uh, my interpretation of what was said from us and the people in the audience, it's not specifically about this project. It's the fact that we'd be opening the door, let anybody do whatever they want.
Right.
Now, we have our solicitors, you would like to ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, Maggie.
So I have um, a question for council if she would like to address, uh, perhaps how the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan? Because the packet of documents that we have received, that particular statement is noticeably absent.
So the comprehensive, originally, like I had stated previously, we were applying for, and all of these documents, including the one that states there's going we were applying for, and all of these documents, including the one that states there's going to be a building on the property, which I will address in a moment. All of these documents and all of these tests were done to allow Hopkinton or apply for Hopkinton to have a public water center. That's what we were applying for. That's what the tests were for. That's why all of this was done to see if Hopkinton wanted another source for their water. That's not necessarily what we're asking for because Town Hopkinton said, no, we don't, we don't want another water source. I provided those documents just to show that the wells were tested, that they were approved, that it's their, you know, legal wells under the state of Rhode Island. And if it were to become a public center, distribution center for the town of Hopkinton, then they could use it as a public center. If they need, it draws plenty of water and would be approved for that. That's why I included them. I wasn't necessarily asking for them to adhere to those plans. I just included them to show everything that had been done on the property and on the well that was approved.
Respectfully, I don't think council understood my question and it could have been the way I asked it, but can you argue to us why the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan? That is the burden of proof for the applicant here before the planning board. And the planning board's obligation under 452452, it, when it issues its advisory recommendation to the town council, the planning board has to include a statement on the general consistency of the proposal with the comprehensive plan, including the goals and policy statement, the implementation program, and all other applicable elements of the comprehensive plan. And we have to include a demonstration of recognition and consideration of each of the applicable purposes of zoning as set forth in 452430. So this is much more high level than the details of a well. That's pretty much what we've heard this evening. So the burden for the applicant would be to convince this planning board to send a positive advisory that this proposal is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan and why it is so.
Like, I guess I would have to say it probably is not consistent with the town's plan according to what was said here today. As far as it goes for commercial property and residential property, I understand the different types of zonings. But it wouldn't be necessarily adhering to the comprehensive. We would be asking to make it an addition to the plan or an acceptance by use is how, how we would ask for it. I don't, I don't see, and I guess any other answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
And there will be no buildings on it. So just, I was letting you know that it was inside the
There will never be any buildings. When it comes to the hearing and you're under oath, there will be no buildings.
No dog houses. No mouse houses.
Okay. I was saying, oh, dog house, chicken house. U S Marshals movie. Dog house, chicken house, dog house. Sorry, hell.
Sorry, I can't contribute.
Okay.
So I'm going to make a motion for discussion, just going to throw it out there. Um, I will move that we recommend to the town council in our advisory opinion that a new use category, commercial water distribution center, not be included in our town's uh, table of uses in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Second for discussion.
Yeah, I'll elaborate. Um, it is not consistent with the natural resource goal, one, specifically to preserve, conserve and protect the significant natural resources of Hopkinton as an endowment for the future of the town. And many of the policies and objectives underneath, especially objective NR2, preserve surface and groundwater resources to ensure safe and adequate drinking water supplies.
Okay, thank you.
And
We have a motion and a second.
We would also need to have the element of consistency with zoning as well. That's the second element. The first is comprehensive plan. The second is demonstration of recognition and consideration of each of the applicable purposes of zoning as presented in 452430.
Sure, I'll amend my motion also to include Cecil's great description of the general purposes of zoning ordinances as it relates to this question in that pretty much none of them are consistent with this use. Promoting the public health, safety, general welfare, providing for a range of uses and intensities with appropriate character, orderly growth and development that recognizes the patterns of use contained in the comprehensive plan, natural characteristics, the values and dynamic nature of coastal and freshwater ponds, shoreline, freshwater coastal wetlands, unique valuable natural resources. I could go on and on. Um, I don't know if Cecil, you want to add something to my motion, but um, I thought that your statement on that was pretty all encompassing.
Yeah. The only thing that I would pretty, pretty succinctly, this use not connected to the project that brought it before us, but this use doesn't seem like it fits. It seems like it doesn't fit so much that that I almost want to add this category in and put straight ends across so that instead of not putting it in and allowing somebody to argue about it later.
There have been instances where those things have actually occurred
Yeah.
in town.
But
I do want to put something forward.
That is viable as a motion. And you can determine if you want to make that as a secondary motion perhaps? After you vote on this first motion?
Thank you, Maggie. We have a motion and we have a second. Problots, yes.
Oh, light, yes. I thought you asked first.
I thought that's what I heard.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Shemshini, yes.
Undalo, yes.
So perhaps someone, if they're interested in Cecil's motion, could make that motion at the, on the full
Yeah, let me phrase it this way. I'll make another motion that our advisory opinion to the town council could offer to them to consider including the use, commercial water distribution center, but with specifying very clearly that it's not allowed in any of the existing zones or in the Aquifer primary, Aquifer secondary zones as stated in the district use table. So there's another option for their consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Problots, yes.
Light, yes.
Shemshini, yes.
Undalo, yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda.
So this one does not have an applicant associated with it, so I can give a bit of a brief presentation about it.
Sure. Sounds good. Thank you, Talia.
So I'll just read my description. On December 6th, 1999, the town, Hopkinton Town Council adopted an ordinance, chapter 151, that allowed accessory dwelling units. By 2008, the state had permitted accessory units for family members with disabilities. By 2017, the state had permitted accessory units for elderly family members. In 2019, the definition of a family member was expanded to include children, parents, spouses, parents-in-law, grandparents, grandchildren, domestic partners, siblings, care recipients, or members of the household. On June 30th, 2022, the Rhode Island Governor Daniel McKee signed R I H 7942, which per the explanation by the Legislative Council amended the definition of an accessory dwelling unit to provide a consistent statewide framework and efficient process for the approval and permitted use of these units. The Act would also permit ADUs to be counted towards low and moderate income housing requirements if certain income and other limitations are met. In order to abide by the revised tenants of the state law governing ADUs, town solicitor Stephen Seipol has amended chapter 151 with assistance from Sherri Desjardins of the Building and Zoning Department. I have attached the original ordinance as well as the amended version. I asked the zoning official Sherri Desjardins, who was involved in revising chapter 151 to comport with the latest state regulations, to provide a memo to the board in relation to what the changes to state law meant for our locality and our ADU ordinance. Her memo is attached. So I asked her to provide a memo because typically the planning department is not involved in accessory dwelling unit anything at all. Um, and so I figured that she would be the best person who could give us some further insight into the changes that have been enacted at the state level. So part of the problem, and this is something that I saw when I read it myself, is that there are inconsistencies within the law itself as it stands at the state level. Uh, there are certain sections that state that you cannot limit it to family members. And then there are other sections later within the same law that says you can only have it for family members. So what is before you today for an advisory opinion is the town solicitors and the zoning officials best attempt to have accessory dwelling units that still comport with state law while also retaining some of the things that people in Hopkinton want to have in relation to accessory dwelling units. So typically what we do when there is an amendment to any ordinance is we go through it piece by piece and say, okay, do you like this or do you like the original? With this, it's a little bit of a unique situation because the changes that have been proposed are very, very specific. They've been crafted very, very specifically so that whatever we have will comport with at least elements of state law. So I don't know if you necessarily have the same amount of latitude as you might with other ordinances that you would be providing an advisory opinion on. There could be elements of this that maybe you like the original better, but maybe that's no longer tenable under the current state law. So that's just something to keep in mind as you review the proposed ordinance, amendment.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to interject. I'd like to, uh, congratulate and applaud staff for taking what I think is a classic state of Rhode Island cock ass idea and molding it into something that fits our community about how it was state of Rhode Island and their brilliant ideas. So anyway, well done to the staff.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is this, is this on up there?
It was before, but not anymore.
Is it this? Ah, wrong way. Okay.
So I am compelled to point out to you the specific inconsistency. Because the State of Rhode Island General Assembly is in fact convinced that it removed the family relationship requirement for an accessory dwelling unit. And in the introduction of the, of the statute, um, and when you look it up online and there were press releases, et cetera. And I think what happened was, I'm sure this is what happened, that one particular section of the existing ordinance, uh, statute, pardon me, was not changed appropriately to be consistent. And I would like to point those out to you. So under, on page two here, you've got section 5.2 and it provides, um, the first sentence here, with the exception of the word only, is word for word from the statute. And the statute is 452437E and it says, accessory dwelling units shall be permitted as part of an owner occupied residence as a reasonable accommodation for family members with disabilities or who are 62 years of age or older or to accommodate other family members. That's what's in that section of that statute. There's another statute, 452473, which states that the municipality shall not restrict tenants based on familial relationship or age unless the restrictions are necessary to comply with the terms of a federal subsidy for occupancy. So you can see there that those are diametrically opposed provisions within that statute. I anticipate and expect that in the next session of the General Assembly, this, the first one that I read to you will be corrected. Nevertheless, in the interim, the town wishes to comply with the statute as written to the best of its ability. And so section 5.2 specifically says the intent of this section is to comply with the minimum requirements of 452437E and to prohibit the use of accessory dwelling units beyond the minimum requirements of that statute. And if you recall, that's the one that says that occupancy shall be limited to family members with disabilities or those above 62. And I also concur with Talia's recitation previously that this is a stat, this is an ordinance that's designed to come into compliance with a state statute. It's not just something that's Hopkinton alone. All cities and towns will be updating their ordinances and providing copies. The law actually requires them to provide a copy of what they've enacted to, I think statewide planning, or it could be the General Assembly. I'm not sure which. I'd have to double check the statute. So in any event, I did want to call that to your attention that there is an inconsistency and this particular ordinance retains the family relationship and the age.
Okay, thank you.
So as I was looking at the definitions section, I was entertained by what a family member is, uh, including member of the household.
And that definition is taken right from the statute.
Right, so. I don't know that you could get vaguer than that if you were trying.
So based on what you and Talia briefed us on, um, there'll most likely be another revision opportunity for us at some point in the future. Right?
I think if the state frankly gets their act together and changes the rest of the law to comport with what they have currently recently changed, we very well could be having another discussion about this where we are again changing the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. I think that this has been put forth as something of like a stopgap between our existing ordinance and whatever could be coming down the pike as a means to kind of control the development of these kinds of units in the interim.
So the only other thing I would add for you is that I'm a little perplexed as to why on the last page, the district use table shows the use and then a line through it instead of leaving it there and changing it as to permitted in all the residential zones. So I'm unclear as to why that's been proposed in that manner. Talia, do you know why?
I do not know why. I think it was, I think it has to do with the fact that when this was being amended, they wanted to amend that as well. But why it was stricken, I frankly don't know the answer. Because I, and I don't understand why it would be stricken partially because as you know, if you have a zoning district use table, when you remove something from the district use table, that means it's prohibited. You can't do anything that is not within the district use table. So that would need to be reintroduced in some form to actually allow any accessory dwelling to actually allow any accessory dwelling unit to exist.
After reading through this during this week, it seems like there's a lot of things, as our solicitor said, that are contradictory. It almost looks like the state is trying to open the door so that at some point they can ship anybody into Hopkinton and put them in one of these, they want to call them ADUs. I like the family unit myself. And it seems a little fishy to me, some of the ways that it's worded. I'm just not comfortable with the way that the state's doing it.
So this is not the state statute that you're reading. You are reading the town's proposed ordinance as amended. You currently have an ordinance on the books that deals with accessory family dwelling unit. That has been changed by statute to accessory dwelling unit, which is why the new definition is in here. And then the family member is described. But the document that you're reading is the change to Hopkinton's ordinance, which implements the state statute, which you are required to implement the statute. But this is your version of it.
Okay, thank you. Board members?
So it seems like in this memo, they talk about the idea that having an ADU prohibited from short-term rentals, like Airbnb and VRBO, but I don't see that in the in the document itself. Seems like that's.
You mean you don't see it in the statute?
Yeah.
I don't either.
I, so.
In the ordinance.
The statute is silent on that issue, I believe. And so that's been added locally to prevent that type of use. The intent for this statute is to promote housing choices for originally family members, and now it's been expanded. It's in part to address the dearth of housing options that Rhode Island is facing presently.
I thought that, I agree with Al, I think that Attorney Seipol and Sherri did a really good job incorporating as much as they could, the new state law or statute into our existing to the best that they could to make them compatible. The only questions I had related to this revised version are, there are a couple instances where in the previous town statute, there's a presentation of materials or evidence or something to the zoning board. And that has been stricken in a couple places, and it's now just to the zoning official or the building official. And I was curious as to why. And I certainly am not questioning the building or zoning official and their capacity, but there's, just since the time that I've been on the board, there's been a couple times where a building official or a zoning official in their singular capacity makes a decision that maybe we look at later and are like, could have been good for that to see the light of day by more than just one person.
I can speak to that a little bit.
So it's removed from the zoning board of reviews per view by the statute.
Yes, by the state statute.
Correct.
So what we had in town was a special use permit. And now there's no longer that element at the state level. So that cuts the zoning board, which would be giving the special use permit out of the equation. That's why it's going to be the zoning enforcement officer because ultimately this is going to be mostly like a pulling a building permit type situation.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
One more technical comment, if I may. Under 8C, application procedures, the application needs to be accompanied by a site plan. The planning board over the past number of years has inserted somewhat different language. Talia and I talked about it earlier. I don't have it at my fingertips, but instead of pointing the preparation of site plans and materials to a particular design professional, we use broader language that makes it easier to keep up with the changing policies of the Board of Design Professionals. Engineers can do this, surveyors can do that, architects can do this other thing. That's an ever-evolving landscape. So when we start creating ordinances that limits the preparation of site plans to a particular design profession, that kind of gets complicated because then if the policy changes, we're stuck with language that doesn't really allow us to get out of that. So I would just respectfully request that maybe Talia can hunt up that language and do an, or request an insert here so that the town council has the kind of language that we've been accustomed to seeing over the past few years. Is that legitimate? Is that a legitimate request?
I'd be willing to look into it and I'd be willing to present it. I'm not sure if it would actually be incorporated by the town attorney and Ms. Desjardins because I don't know if there are elements of the state law that state that it's an engineer who does it.
Yeah, that's a lobby issue. Yeah, you can almost guarantee it. Anyway, if you recommend the language change, I'll come in and argue the point.
Okay.
So what's in, there's nothing specified in the proposed change. It just says that they've got to present a floor plan, building elevation to the building official, and they have to have a zoning certificate application. These may be deemed to be a reach beyond the requirements at the state statute level, but I think that remains to be seen. So I'm not sure, you wanted to import something here as to the design professional?
Yeah, under 8C, that first line is, in my opinion, inappropriate.
Where it says, "Site plan, each application shall be accompanied by a site plan prepared by a professional engineer." Al's issue is with the specific reference to professional engineer. I think he wants it to be more expansive.
We typically use language that's more along the line of a design professional duly authorized to practice in the state of Rhode Island who can legitimately offer that service.
I was looking at, I was looking at subsection A, and I couldn't figure out why you were talking about that. So I missed C, okay. Yeah, that makes sense.
It doesn't preclude an engineer from doing it, but it opens the door to any other design professional that may be duly authorized to do it as well.
Exactly, yep.
And that was my only technical comment on that. Thank you.
Did you want to address the district use table issue? I think you should.
Yeah, doesn't it have to be modified?
Not stricken.
Yeah, right. I mean, I don't mind special use permit in all the zones with the exception of manufacturing, but you got to take the strikeout.
The special use permit is no longer allowed. It's, these are allowed in residential zones.
Yes.
Yes, so there's no special use required any longer.
So it's allowed.
By right, correct.
And RF8 residential 1, what's the NV?
Neighborhood business.
Neighborhood business. It wouldn't be allowed there, right? I mean, I would say no.
Yeah, why are we allowing it in commercial and neighborhood business?
Correct, yeah. So, and I've got the statute up, so let me just tell you on the additional provisions, it says, pardon me, they're going to be reviewed by an administrative officer. They're not reviewed as a minor land development. "There shall be a permitted use in any residential district with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet or more and where the proposed ADU is located within the existing footprint of the primary structure or existing secondary attached or detached structure and does not expand the footprint of the structure." Do you have any, do we have any lots, do we have a zone that's 20,000 square feet or less?
Yeah, what's R1?
Well, so R1 is, it's kind of complicated to explain because way back when, there were discussions about having smaller lot sizes. That didn't work in Hopkinton. Now, whenever there is a new R1 property created, like when you have a subdivision of R1, the lot has to be 60,000 square feet. So there wouldn't be any like new R1s that would be 20,000. But there are substandard lots of record that exist. There are lots that are 20,000 square feet. There are, I've seen ones that are incredibly small that I don't know how a house was even put on one in the first place, but so yes, we do have some. I couldn't give you a delineation of all of them, but they exist.
And I'm sorry, that language says?
So it says, "ADU shall be a permitted use in any residential district with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet or more and where the proposed ADU is located within the existing footprint of the primary structure or existing secondary attached or detached structure and does not expand the footprint of the structure." Might you just incorporate that language, that very specific subsection, it's 452474B. And maybe you could recommend that that just be included in this ordinance somewhere, which makes it clear that the ADU is in fact limited to lots that are greater than 20,000 square feet.
So and is the interpretation of that language that the lot has to be 20,000 or that the lot in a zone of 20,000?
Nope, minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. It could be in any zone, but it has to have, in order to have an ADU, you've got to have a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet.
Good, yes, I think that should be incorporated into that.
So when you get to your motion, you'll have a motion to include 452474B in the body of the ordinance someplace and leave that up to the town council.
Good, thank you. Okay, thank you. I've got something running through my mind that I don't know if the question would be appropriate. Let me shuffle that.
And just so everybody is informed that these are going to be allowed to be counted towards the 10% affordable housing requirement that Hopkinton has, that we all have, every town.
Okay, so just to confirm, the district use table would only be approved for RF8 and residential 1 and no for the next three? And the primary and secondary aquifers will be permitted? Am I right?
Yes.
Well, isn't the entire town either primary or secondary? So if you need a permit for those, you'd need a permit, an aquifer permit for any of them?
Pretty much.
Is that okay? Is that consistent with the state statute that an aquifer permit is required for this? Is that mentioned anywhere?
That is a good question. I don't know the answer to that.
An aquifer permit is definitely not mentioned in the statute. But what it does say is that, the concept is that this is supposed to be broadly applied the same way from town to town, not every detail, but broadly. And so what it says is, and it says, "Consistent statewide treatment of accessory dwelling units. Any municipality that chooses to permit accessory dwelling units within the municipality shall not impose any excessive restrictions on accessory dwelling units." So I would say that because everything else in Charleston, sorry, Hopkinton has to have, has to be evaluated under an aquifer protection permit, that treating the ADU the same way would be fine.
Okay. Where do we go from here?
So just like with the previous advisory opinion, I need a motion on an advisory opinion to the town council in relation to whether or not what's proposed comports with the comprehensive plan and whether or not it comports with the tenants of zoning as established in 4524, can't remember the last number off the top of my head.
452430, was that what it was? No, it doesn't matter, yeah. No, 30, 452430.
Yes, 452430.
So if I can, this, again, I hate to keep pointing back to the memo, but the memo discusses the idea that we were going to limit only one ADU per property septic system suitability determination from RIDAM and prohibit ADU occupancy from short-term rentals. And I don't know that I see all that language.
Yeah, in our ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, the suitability is here. I glossed over it. That would be 8B required unless the application proposes no additional bedrooms.
Okay.
Which I guess is okay. That means we're going to allow those, I do have this underlined, we're going to allow these in dwellings served by cesspools. Doesn't seem like the best idea in the world, a system suitability that captures all applications would address that. But they've decided not to.
I guess they're trying to think of, like if you had a house with five bedrooms in it, and you take one bedroom and bathroom and put a separate wall in and a separate entrance that you wouldn't have to go ask if the septic would handle it because it would already been there is the only thing I can think of.
Well, that's their thinking.
Yeah.
We might have a system fail the next day. Anyway, I won't argue that point, but it is in here. What was your other concern? I'm sorry?
So there were three, is people were only allowed one. I think that's because the example they gave was where somebody would end up with like four of them on their property and
Yeah, you can cut the house up on the inside.
Right, and then put structures outside and, you know, I hate to go down the description of intent, but I don't think that's what they meant when they designed this.
You'd have a nice little gypsy camp.
Yeah. So.
What do you think about 5B? They, it looks like they're trying to address that by percentage of additional floor space. So I mean, I suppose you could have five of them, but they'd all be like 35 square feet each.
350 is a minimum, right? So even if you come in underneath.
Well, shall not exceed 25% of the floor area.
I don't know. People can get very creative when they need to.
Point well taken, point well taken.
This is our existing amendment, right?
This one right here?
So there is, there is a limitation under
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
So Section 5.2, under subsection 4, 4C, says only one accessory dwelling unit is permitted per residential lot. It's just above Section 5, which has occupancy. There's no numbers on these pages, so it's hard to follow.
Oh, I see it. Yeah, the whole rest of it's crossed out, so it kind of blended in there.
Yep.
And then, of course, yeah, the idea that you can't do short-term rentals as a
And that was actually added locally.
Yeah, that's 5B.
Yep. Which I think is a good one.
5B? Oh, okay.
Under occupancy.
I see it. All right, all right. There's a lot of fives.
There are.
Okay, yeah, those were, those three were kind of my main concern.
Hey. We have any other discussion? We have any other discussion?
I think it was well done.
The only thing that I have any kind of an issue with is the fact that they're taking the word "family" out of the... That's just my old-fashioned ways, I guess. New age, different.
Out of the title.
Inconsistent, right?
Yeah.
Accessory family dwelling unit, AFDU. It's real, look, AFDU.
No, no complaint.
All righty then.
Okay, so our job here is to make an opinion for the town council, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So I'll move that we advise the town council that we've reviewed the text of the revised Section 5.2 supplemental regulations, accessory dwelling units, and find no additional edits required there with the exception of recommending that language be included somewhere in the body of this ordinance that references Rhode Island General Law as to the minimum lot sizes and the types of zones where these ADUs would be allowed from the original Rhode Island General Law on this topic. And we would also recommend that the district use table reflect some of that general intention so that in our town, RFR 80 and residential 1 or R1, ADUs would be allowable in both of those zones, not allowed in neighborhood business, commercial, or manufacturing, and consistent with other residential uses of the town, aquifer permit would be required in both the primary and secondary aquifer protection zones for all ADUs.
And perhaps, before a second, I could get you to add to your list of things to address Section 8C, please.
Yes, I will amend. I have a couple of things to amend, actually. So in addition, we also advise the town council that under Section 8C, broadening the language to include other design professionals beyond just professional engineers that are appointed to prepare site plans and other documents that are mentioned in this Section 8C. In addition, I just want to note that we did discuss that we feel this, these changes are consistent with the general purposes of zoning ordinances as expressed in 45-24-30 and consistent with the Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan, specifically Goal H3, which is called out by the Rhode Island General Law that sort of originated this change related to maintaining sufficient levels and proportions of affordable and accessible housing stock for residents.
Well done. Thank you. Second.
Good job.
We have a motion and a second. Prelate, yes.
Light, yes.
Lindalo, yes.
Shamsini, yes.
Yorio, yes. The motion carries. Well done. Good job.
You are the official motion maker.
You just blow out. You can't stop it.
I think you could sell that. Oh, God. But you can't do it from your house.
No.
Next time.
My notation here. It's a green. Okay. The next order of business. Continuance request. Development plan review. Hopkinton Industrial Park General Warehousing. Mr. Chairman, before you begin this application, I'd like to forward my notice of recusal for the Hopkinton Industrial Park General Warehousing application. My firm has performed the surveying and mapping for the project, and as a result, I'm going to recuse myself. In addition, in an effort to be efficient, I'm also going to issue the similar notice for the Preserve Business Park. My firm performed surveying and mapping for the project, and I am involved with this project. So I'm going to pass my recusals on to Talia and excuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
You're up.
Thank you. I'll give a brief introduction for this one. This is the general warehousing development plan review project. They are seeking a continuance until October 5 at 7:00 p.m. They note that their appearance on the agenda is contingent upon the progress they're making with state approvals. So there could very well be another continuance request ahead of the October meeting date.
Okay, thank you.
Doesn't October have Atlantic and Skunk Hill?
Yes.
Problematic?
Nope.
This is something that I've wrestled with a great deal as I've been preparing agendas.
And who won?
I'm wrestling myself, so either way, I come out on top. So there are going to always be big projects that will require a lot of your time and attention and energy. At the same time, there are always going to be small projects that are going to still require time and energy and thought. And while I have, in the past, tried to not make agendas so monstrously long that no one can stand to be in the planning board meeting for, you know, more than however many hours we normally spend here, there will definitely come a time where we are going to have to have some pretty long meetings. I think tonight it could very well be a case in point. So the long, that was the long answer to your question of, is this going to be a packed agenda? Yes, but at some point, we have to make the determination that we can't defer small stuff for big stuff forever.
Could I make a suggestion as to the scheduling?
Sure.
About if we put, on October 5, the Hopkinton Industrial Park General Warehousing, and put them first on the agenda so that they can pretty much get their business taken care of before we get into the incredibly muddy waters of the other two big projects?
I could do that.
Okay. Is there representative here?
No.
I see no volunteers. Okay.
I've just got one question. Talia, your memo says that the October meeting is October 5. Our agenda says October 7 under this.
I just looked it up. It's the 5th.
It's the 5th, okay.
It's October 5. The 7th is Friday.
Okay, cool.
Yep, it's October 5. My agenda is incorrect.
So I'll make a motion, then, that we continue the DPR review of the Hopkinton Industrial Park General Warehousing project until October 5, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the town council chambers.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Your second.
We have a motion and a second. Prelate, yes.
Light, yes.
Shamsini, yes.
Lindalo, yes.
Wales, yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Motion carries. Next on the agenda. Master plan, public informational meeting, seven lot major subdivision. Lot plan, excuse me, land development project, preserve business park. SM Trumbino Properties LLC applicant. There's Mr. Trumbino. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Evening, I guess.
Evening, correct. So we're here today for the continuation and to act on my request for a waiver of the asphalt thickness to the four inches as per Figure 2 of the cross-section local roads. When last we were here, we scheduled a sit walk on August 18, which I was there with Talia, members of DPW staff, and Steve from Crossman Engineering. So we went through each of our concerns, described the project to each other and went over it. They looked at everything. And I believe you have a memo in front of you from staff. And I'm fine with staff's recommendation. So that's it.
Okay, thank you.
So the way this works is that the planning board has the authority to waive or modify one or more of the requirements for subdivision or land development project approval contained in these regulations if the planning board finds that, A, the waiver or modification is reasonable and consistent with the general purposes and intent of these regulations; and B, literal enforcement of one or more of the provisions of the regulations would be impracticable and would exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question or waiver and/or modification of the regulation is in the best interest of good planning practice and/or design is evidenced by consistency with the comprehensive community plan and the zoning ordinance; and the waiver does not reduce the standard to lessen the requirements of the Hopkinton zoning ordinance. So I would suggest that you make your determination on the waiver based upon the testimony that's been put forth by the applicant in conjunction with the memo that was produced by Steve Cabral and Mr. Caswell of DPW, and operate accordingly.
If it makes it easier, I can point out the reasons again of why I asked for the difference.
Sure.
That way you can...
Thank you.
As I stated in earlier meetings, although the property is own manufacturing, it is an classification intended to be a business park, not an industrial park. So with that thought process in mind, which we discussed that day during a sit walk, it won't have the heavy truck traffic that you would think of an industrial park. We don't have any big ones around here to cross-reference it to, but it would have commercial vehicles instead of industrial vehicles. The regulations allow, 17.2.5, your regulations allow that commercial manufacturing developments shall be designed to the same principles governing design of residential developments and that sufficient access we provided. I believe that what I propose is sufficient access. If you look at the chart on page 175, Table 1 in Hopkinton subdivision regulations, it classifies any lots, any subdivision, excuse me, with less than eight lots be classified as a local road. My subdivision is seven lots. So following that, local road designation on page 201, that calls out the 2.5 inches of binder, top to the inch and a half of binder to make the four inches of compacted asphalt. So our regulations already, your regulations already have the mechanism to call out what I'm asking for. Also, subdivision 17.2.6 describes that the road should be designed to permit the safe, efficient, and orderly movement of traffic. And it specifically says to meet but not exceed the needs of the future or the present future population. Again, I feel the four inches meets the current needs, and the 5.5 would be excessive. And lastly, subsection 17.4.4 is the one that gives you the authority to give specific design criteria on a case-by-case basis. So for all these reasons, I'm asking for the asphalt thickness to go to the four inches. We're still within the Hopkinton regulations. We're not going below the regulations. We're just choosing a different cross-section to abide by. That's it.
And another element of it, this is included in the memorandum. So this is, this understanding between the applicant and DPW and the town engineer is based upon the understanding that this is a business park as opposed to an industrial park. And so there are caveats in this, and you'll see in the motion that has been drafted by the solicitor, if you're so inclined to have a motion in relation to this, is that as this proceeds through a review, if at a certain point in time there is a discussion that there will be tractor-trailer traffic flowing up and down this route, that the thickness could be revisited based upon the proposed or actual uses for the property. And that was something that the town staff generally felt comfortable with as well as Steve Cabral.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Trumbino, correct? You agree?
Yes, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And the other option, as you know from the draft that I've provided to you, pardon me, is to defer a decision on the issue of the thickness of the asphalt until the next stage of review. It's an option as well.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I've noticed we have a memo, well, actually, a letter from... Yeah, we got his. I'm drawing a blank here mentally.
Are you talking about Mr. Caswell?
Yes, I am. I'm Dave Caswell. You know, so he's in attendance. Would you like to speak, Mr. Caswell? Okay. Thank you.
You just came for the coffee?
Dave Caswell, 36 Hyview. I'm your Public Works Director. And meeting with Mr. Trumbino and Talia and my foreman, Jim Hurley, who's also in attendance, Stephen Cabral, we all put our heads together and agreed that the five-plus inches of asphalt was not conducive to that project or not necessary. In my tenure with the town, I know of no asphalt areas that are five-plus inches thick at this time. So under the use that Mr. Trumbino explained to us for the project, we felt that the four inch would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Your consideration will be appreciated.
Right, thank you, sir.
So where do we go from here, Talia? What would you like us to do?
We discuss.
Discussion from the planning board?
Take a break, go get a couple of beers.
Just a question before that, and thanks for your comments, but where did the five-inch? The guy I know is here. Well, when did the five-inch discussion come up? There's never been any in any town on this road.
That was our consulting engineer.
Yeah, it's part of a regulation.
It's provided in the regulations for that type of road.
Yes, thus the necessity for a waiver.
I'm inclined to approve the waiver and not hold this for the next stage of review.
Um, I don't strongly disagree, but I kind of liked how our solicitor drafted the motion. It's not necessary necessarily to approve the waiver at this stage. It's just one more stage. And then we might know a little bit more about the types of occupants of the units and be able to make a more informed decision. So I like how the motion was drafted personally.
Do you need copies of the motion?
Are you watching TV?
If you're going to be making a motion, I have copies.
Got it. My only question about the draft motion was that it says at the top preliminary plan approval for the master plan.
Um, cut and paste, Dara.
Yeah. It's just the first stage of master plan, right?
It's just, it's just master.
Just master plan.
Just eliminate the preliminary.
Got it.
Sorry.
No, no problem.
Okay.
I think a motion on the waiver would be appropriate.
Motion on the waiver.
Yeah, just saying whether or not you agree, um, if that is how you're going to be going forth. But again, as you've discussed, maybe you want to defer that. But I'm just putting that out there.
Right, right, right. What do you guys think?
Contribute.
I, I, I don't, I don't think we're causing the applicant any undue hardship by kicking it to the next stage and we're giving ourselves some
True story.
Some, uh, latitude. So I yeah, I don't.
I understand your concerns. I only ask that, you know, being all, uh, having common sense here tonight doesn't mean that's what's going to happen a year from now or two years from now when it's different people here. So I respectfully ask that we just make a decision. It's been going on for four years. So, through any, you know, and I went through the list of every industrial place we have in town. Four wrenches is an extreme. Some have oil and stone. So just to keep kicking the can down the road. I mean, I've, I've done everything I was asked to do and it's just keep, you know, it's always pre-cloaked me coming back two years from now and then there's a totally different mindset. And then I'm back to square one and so that's all.
The proposal to defer that to the next stage of review was made specifically in response to the memorandum that was submitted that, um, that indicated that there was the possibility that the road would in fact need to be increased in the depth depending upon the uses. You've not set forth a series of uses and so the board is grappling with that particular issue. And the thought process was that you get to the next stage of review, you may have a much more solid idea as to what your tenants are going to be there. Um, and that might put the final nail, if you will, on that issue. Uh, it's obviously the board's discretion to either decide it at this stage of review or to hold it until they have additional information as to the tenants.
One last comment and then I'm, I'm all yours. So I understand that exactly how it works. So to take it from us here tonight discussing it and take it to the field. So when you put down a binder coat and start, you know, shopping for tenants and doing all that, you know, at that, at what point do you really come back and, I mean, we just adding time and more right tape to a process. You know, if it gets to a point where DPW says to me, hey, we're really in five and a half inches. I don't think airports are five and a half inches, but if that's what they tell me, then who am I to say no? And, you know, by that point, that means I have ten inch for seven, seven spots and I won't care about five and a half inches. But to require it before there's a binder, before I can shop tents, before I can start a construction process is kind of like, you know, chicken and the egg. So.
We're only at master. Am I, am I wrong here? We're at master.
No, we're at master. Correct.
So you've got to come back for preliminary and that decision is made then. You're not going to be putting any binder coats down until you get your preliminary determination. You get a preliminary plan approved. It won't be doing any construction until then.
I'm not talking construction, but at some point, we're going to want to get, uh, once the ponds are built, you want to get the, the rain structures to work. You can't work on gravel. So I mean, there's, there's construction steps that have to be taken to get to that point. Again.
Yeah, but you're not doing that until you, my point is you're not doing any of that until you get your preliminary plan approved. That's the next step. So the decision can, can be made at that stage. And you're not going to be doing any construction, anything until you get that stage done.
Okay, I'll leave it up to the board. Thank you.
Okay, board members.
Well, if, if that was true, that Crossman is, uh, now happy with four inches. Having that would probably make it significantly easier to grant the waiver next time.
DPW is happy with it. Crossman's happy with it.
Yeah, yeah. So if we just had that, then I'm sure it would be very.
King of Norway, he's happy with it.
Well, that was the most important, I think.
It was.
Do we have a motion?
Um, I just want to be clear, I guess, because I was confused by what you just said.
Okay.
Um, so the memo from the director of public works specifically says the last paragraph that just because we're at master plan stage and there isn't any specific information on future tenants, they, you know, they, they would want to modify their recommendation if it became clear that additional truck traffic was going to be part of this development. So, you know, regardless of the oral testimony given, this memo documents that hesitancy that I think we should acknowledge. We don't really have the evidence to grant the waiver right now, I don't think.
Some of my interpretation of that statement is that if the fifth tenant is applying for, um, occupancy and the fifth tenant is going to be bringing an eighteen wheeler in once a month, then that's when, that's my interpretation. Then that's when the four inches isn't enough. And that tenant isn't going to be able to occupy until it's cleared through our community. Right? That's how I interpret it. But perception is everything.
Is that how that works though? Like we don't get to tell him who his tenants are?
Um, depending on what the tenants are doing, we do.
I don't think so.
Well, for instance, we've got, um, uh, I don't know, exit one. Um, you've got a, uh, high tech profiles building which had existed somewhere else before that business could be placed over there. That business had to be approved for utilities and all the other things that are involved in that business that has heavy equipment going into it on a regular basis, calling off their product, you know? So it's, he, he can't just say, okay, you've got, uh, five extruders that weigh seventy-five thousand pounds each. You can put them in here. That, that's just not going to work.
Well, I guess my hesitancy is this, this memo. We only have control of this through the different approval processes. And then when he leaves here, he goes and gets the actual tenants. So it would be up to like someone filing a complaint if there was heavy truck traffic on that road for it to ever come to the town again. Which again, we're all talking like hypotheticals, but the point is we don't have the evidence before us to, in my opinion, conclusively grant a waiver for this specific thing. I know it's really inconvenient and terrible, but the, but the, 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 um, you know, the conditions in our, uh, design and, uh, you know, ordinance for this type of development happened to say five inches of asphalt. I didn't make that up, but it's on the books. And so in order to grant a waiver, we have to have a really good reason to do it. And there's a really good reason not to do it in this second paragraph. So I have to go with that.
I concur, but you know what? I also asked, why is there no place in Hockington? It has five inches if it's something that's on the.
Not our problem right now. Totally agree with you, but not the problem right now.
But the question is, is it on the books?
Yes.
Or was it just?
No, there's a, there's a five word note on one of the plans in the lower right hand corner. It's not a regulation. It's not spelled out. I mean.
So realistically, um, Mr. Trambino, there, there, there is no harm being done by not granting the waiver now and, and pushing it off to the next review process. Um, unless there's some reason that the road needs to be constructed before the next approval is required.
It can't be though, right?
Well.
Well.
Well, what? Why do you want it now?
Because after four years, it's, it's a road. I'm not curing cancer. It's, you know, I mean, it's, uh, but whatever, whatever the board wants.
Yep.
It's just, it's overkill. It's, the state of Rhode Island doesn't have five and a half inch roads in, uh, on their highways. And we're going to need it on a dead end road going to seven lots. But because a little sick, little note says it on a cross section that was drawn by a.
Reasonable doubt we should have asked Mr. Vell those questions when he presented his opinion. We didn't ask him enough questions.
Well, me, yeah, I would think that.
It doesn't matter though, in the regulations. So if people disagree with the regulations, we should like submit an amendment to the regulations later. But for right now, we, we don't have time to do it, right? We just have to proceed.
Is here if you would like him to weigh in.
Oh, where's he hiding?
No, he's, he's via Zoom.
Oh.
He's online?
Oh, why is he raising his paws?
Oh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We were talking about you.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I've been here all evening. So sorry I couldn't make it, but I just came back from vacation today. So I'm catching up. Oh, yes, the, the reason that we pointed out the five inches is that in the town land development regulations on your typical roadway sections, there is a notation that states that when you have a new roadway in commercial and industrial zones, that the roads need to be built in accordance with the collector road standards and the collector road standards do have the thicker pavement. Now, when regards to what a typical roadway is, I, we do, well, for forty years, we've designed roadways for the state DOT. And as recently as last week, we were working on a, a two lane roadway that actually had nine inches of road. So as an engineer, a five inch thickness paved surface on a commercial industrial roadway is within reasonable standards. The reason we were willing to consider the four is that based upon the developers' intent to market the land as a business park. We, you know, and when we think of a business park, we're envisioning it's going to have mostly vehicles, automobiles, pickup trucks, but not eighteen wheelers, not distribution centers. But as some of the, the board members stated, there is that bit of unknown at the master plan stage. And that unknown is we don't know the specific users. And that's why in the second paragraph, we put that disclaimer that basically says, as the project goes through the preliminary and final review stages, if there is more information on the tenants and if that information indicates that there could be more truck traffic than we currently anticipate, that we wanted to reserve the right to go back to the town standard of five inches. But we did want to convey to the developer that we are reasonable and if it is a true business park as opposed to industrial park, that the four would be reasonable.
Works for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. I mean, sorry I couldn't make it today. I
Okay.
In order for motion?
Ready for motion?
Ready for.
Ready for motion.
All right. Um, I move to grant master plan approval for preserve business park, a seven lot major subdivision land development project proposed for plat twenty-three lot fifty-six A one fifty all in Bradford Road. Findings of fact, one, Trambino Properties LLC is the owner applicant. Stano Trambino represented the applicant. Two, on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, the application was certified as complete. Three, the applicant has agreed to extensions of the review date to accommodate peer review and address issues raised through both that process and public hearing. Four, on July fifth, twenty twenty-two, Andrea Pansiera filed a letter with the planning board outlining her questions and concerns about the project. In that letter, she specifically requested that the town set construction time limits such as eight AM to five PM weekdays only. She also identified traffic volume and speed, drainage, potential well impacts and potential tenant noise as concerns. Five, on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, the town's consulting engineer, Stephen Cabral, professional engineer of Crossman Engineering, issued a six page written report and recommendations. Six, on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, Onsite Engineering, Inc. submitted an eight page written response to the Crossman Engineering report. Seven, on August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, the applicant filed a request to pave the access road according to the requirements of figure two typical cross section for local road. This is in essence a request for a waiver of the requirement set forth under a collector road as required for commercial industrial zones. Eight, the applicant's August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two request for waiver was accompanied by a memo from the town's director of public works dated August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. The memo stated in pertinent part, quote, "We recognize that the project is at master plan phase and there is no specific information on future tenants. If during the preliminary or final plan review stages, additional information on tenants indicates the potential for truck traffic typical of an industrial park as opposed to a business park, we request the ability to amend our recommendation. Also, if during the development plan review process for the future permitting of each lot, a proposed use will generate daily truck traffic. For example, tractor trailer or greater weights, the applicant should be required to upgrade the road pavement," end quote. Nine, the planning board conducted public hearings on the application on July sixth, twenty twenty-two, August third, twenty twenty-two, and September seventh, twenty twenty-two. We should close the public hearing. Inclusions of law. One, the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive community plan and or has satisfactorily addressed the issues where there may be inconsistencies. Two, the proposed development complies with the Hockington zoning ordinance. Three, there will be no significant negative environmental impacts from the proposed development as shown on the plan with all required conditions for approval. Four, the proposed addition shall have adequate and permanent physical access to a public street. Five, the proposed development provides for safe circulation of pedestrian vehicular traffic for surface water runoff control, for suitable building sites and for preservation of natural historical and cultural features that contributes to the attractiveness of the community with required conditions of approval. Six, the design and location of streets, building lots, utilities, drainage improvements and other improvements in the proposed development minimizes flooding and soil erosion with required conditions of approval. The order, one, the master plan is hereby approved, subject to the following conditions of approval. Two, the request for a waiver of the pavement thickness shall be deferred to the preliminary plan stage of approval. Once the applicant has identified the type of occupants of the units, the planning board reserves the right to impose the full requirement of the collector road regulations at the preliminary stage of review. Three, construction of the development, including the buildings, shall be limited to weekdays between the hours of eight AM to five PM. Four, all recommendations made by Crossman Engineering in its July twenty-third, twenty twenty-two memo, including the items from a review in two thousand nineteen are adopted incorporated herein as conditions of approval. So ends my motion.
So ends the motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Prolet's yes.
Light yes. Chomshini, yes.
And below, yes.
Wales, yes.
And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Trambino and Tony. Yes, it is. All right then. Next order of business on the agenda is development plan review, Anderson mixed use. Do we have the applicant or a representative?
The applicant is joining us via Zoom.
I'm sorry?
They're joining us via Zoom.
Zoom, zoom, zoom. Joining us via Zoom. Stay here.
Thank you.
It went Steve.
All on vacation.
Zoom land.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to speak? Mr. Applicant.
He just has to unmute himself. Let's take a second. All right, Sam, both you and Jad have been made panelists.
Thank you. I don't know if Ted wanted to say something or if he's muted, so I can't really tell from here.
He's unmuted. I've made him a panelist. Uh, if you want to weigh in at any point, Jad, you can raise your hand and I'll let the board know that you want to have a statement made so we're not all talking over each other. But what I think I'd like to have happen is I'd like the, uh, I'd like Crosman to discuss their most recent memo in relation to this project and have the applicant respond. Um, as you'll know, the first item in relation to whether or not a variance is required hat is now moot. I sought the opinion of our building and zoning department, and they have determined that the impervious surface is preexisting and is therefore not subject to dimensional regulations in section six footnote two. It is understood, this is directly from their memo, it is understood their intention is to remove the existing asphalt and repave this area. So the first one has really been dispensed with, so now it's really just two through 18.
Okay, I would tell you, if you'd like, I could quickly went through the August 26th memo, if that's.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And, okay, we did have an opportunity to review the plans. And one of the good design features of this project is the fact that there is impervious surfaces there today and in the future, the amount of impervious surface will actually be less. So when, in the end, the drainage system is actually an opportunity to improve conditions because now the way that the drainage system was designed, all of the impervious surfaces will now be treated in accordance with the newest standards. So I do see this as a project with environmental benefits in regards to stormwater quality. And I, I know you still have a busy night, so I'll just quickly go through the other comments. One comment I had was the parking lot, the way it was initially designed looked very tight. So I just wanted to make sure that a fire truck turning radius could maneuver through the parking lot. And I believe that Garofalo did submit revised plans with, which did demonstrate that the truck radius does work. And number three was, we noticed that there was one driveway coming in near the sawmill building. And I thought it would be a, a safety benefit if there was a fire lane that connected the left side of the project to the right side of the project. In essence, a typical fire lane, and according to it, NFPA is 20 feet wide. So our number three recommendation was just to extend the 20 foot connection so that a fire truck could actually make a loop through the project if, if need be. Number four was really just a question as to whether or not the existing lots would be merged because I noticed that the sawmill is on its own standalone lot. And I believe Garofalo replied that no, the lots would not be merged. Okay, item five had to do with water use. And our concern for the water use was more in regards to phase two. And the reason for the concern is if there was, is going to be a brewery on site, we were concerned that the well would be classified as a public well. And there were no public wells in the required protective radius depicted on the plan. So because of that, I'm assuming that we are here to only approve phase one. But I, that is my assumption. And the reason I say that is for the phase two water supply in the septic system, no doubt it was depicted. And number six was just a their recommendation on the type of catch basin grate that makes it easier for people to walk over a grate if it's in a parking lot. And I believe the designer agreed to do that. Again, number seven was just a clarification on the parking count for phase one. And there are certainly ample parking provided. Number eight, number eight has to do with, we had just requested a specification in detail of the type of gravel surface that was proposed over by the sawmill. And I do believe that Garofalo would agree to include that. Number nine had to do with the land survey. As, as I mentioned, there were multiple lots on the site, and I did not see a survey for lot 6A, which is the sawmill lots. And I do understand that Garofalo has one available and that they'll be providing that to the, to the town. Number 10 had to do with signage. Typically, at this stage, we would have a signage plan of the site. And there were no signage shown on, on the plans. And I believe the response by the applicant was that no signage is proposed at this time. Uh, number 11 had to do with, it was more of a question based upon the uses on site. I wanted to make sure whether or not the uses would require the parking or storage of trucks and heavy equipment outside overnight. And if the answer was yes, then I would have recommendations as to the type of surface and the location. But I believe based on the initial responses that there will be no trucks or equipment stored outside. Number 12 had to do with the loading area for the, the, the garden greenhouse area. And I do believe that plans that will be submitted to the board will include a new loading area. Number 13 had to do with landscaping for phase one on the plans that were submitted. There, there was limited landscaping shown. I believe there are only six trees and no shrubs. And in the town's land development design guidelines, uh, the town has very strong recommendations for landscaping. And so it is my understanding that the new landscape plan will be submitted. And number eight, number 14, uh, we noticed that there's an 18 inch culvert that takes runoff from the, I believe it's the west side of, of the, the main roadway and discharges surface runoff from approximately 50 acres. I could be wrong on the watershed, but it's a substantial watershed in discharges onto the development site near the sawmill. And we just want to make sure that the runoff from that existing culvert is conveyed safely through the site without creating erosion in that it's discharges at the same point that it discharges today in regards to the deboning property. And I, Sam of Garofalo did provide additional information, which I know will be coming in a more formal package at the next meeting. Item 15, as I visited the site, I noticed that there was guardrail in front of portions of the property, and I had just recommended that that guardrail be shown on the plan so that we could see if, if any of the improvements would impact the guardrail. And the reason for the guardrail is there's an elevation drop from the roadway to the site. Number 16 had to do with the slope work of the southernmost driveway by the sawmill. Uh, on the design plans, it looked relatively steep at 13%. I just want to make sure that the volume of traffic that uses that driveway was going to be low use and not intended to be used by, by the customers to the other uses. And if so, I would recommend that the slope be, be reduced. Again, if it's a low volume use by employees, the driveway slope would, would be fine. Uh, let's see, number 17, state permits. I just had a question as to the status of the permits and whether or not a public well had been applied for, for the phase two. And number 17 had to do with the drainage. Uh, basically, there, there are two design points. The major design point is where there's the main infiltration pond. And the analysis clearly showed that with less impervious surfaces, there'd be a decrease in, in runoff. And it also adequately provided, it adequately demonstrated that there's adequate measures to meet the stormwater quality standards. But one technical issue is that the town arrives at two year storm and a 25 year storm in addition to the ones that were provided in the report. And Garofalo did provide those, so I, I was satisfied with their response. And the last item was over by the sawmill, there was a new bio retention basin that's proposed. And I had just requested that an analysis be provided to demonstrate the new discharge from that bio retention basin is no, no larger in regards to peak flow and volume than the existing conditions. And the reason I mentioned that was this bio retention basin discharges into a different location than the primary infiltration pond. So o- overall, the comments are more technical and I'm, I'm positive that they can all, all be worked out. You know, when, when Garofalo submits for the, the next meeting. So Talia, that's a very quick summary.
So my question is first for the applicant. Um, could you give us some information on how you intend to comply with the elements that were put forth in Crosman's memo? And this can be brief.
Yeah, I, I think that's probably me to add, you know. Um, so to, to run through them, there were, um, a couple of those items that I think weren't discussion. And I, a part of the discussion I had with Talia earlier, uh, before coming to this meeting was, uh, to what extent the, the board wants to weigh in on any of these items. But I'll clarify at least where we're at and, and where we, what we're intending on getting back to, to specifically address those comments without input from the board. So, uh, I think the first substantive one was, um, the, the phasing of the project. So the intent, uh, and I think we discussed this, uh, by now we've had, I think, three meetings, with the board is that notionally, all of, we, we would like to see the, all the improvements shown in terms of physical layout, the parking improvements, et cetera, be, uh, approved as part of this application. Uh, the, the, the first phase of construction is going to be for the components that are immediately related to Ted's business and the addition of a garden center, which is an expansion of, of his current business and the operations. But not the, uh, the, the specific operation associated with the brewery because it introduced so many complexities. Uh, you know, Jad, I, as, as I, I think, um, indicated to me and made pretty clear his, his, his desire to keep this moving, say, you know, address, install whatever improvements needs to have to make this, this property better, function well for him and improve the site. Uh, but there are certain unknowns, long term unknowns that just have not been resolved and won't be resolved frankly for a couple of years. So we, we, it needs to be phased, but he fully intends on building, building that whole parking lot as it's shown now. So, uh, hopefully that's clear in what's been provided. I know, uh, you know, Steve had questions or Crosman Engineering had questions. I think the board had questions. Uh, it, it's difficult to put on a drawing. It's a little distro even to put into words. But I, I think Dad is here, he's been at the meetings and is happy to answer those. That the signage, I think, falls into that same realm. So site plans do reflect, uh, two signs on the property. One at the industrial or, or, um, the southern lot 6A, which is the, the industrial component, the sawmill portion. Uh, and the second sign is proposed at the main entrance to, uh, the, the existing entrance to what was the, the Enchanted Forest parking facility. The specifics of those signs have not been worked out. And, yeah, again, we, uh, you know, I, I think Dad wants to be working on a, on the, on the property, get his company up and running, uh, and will look, fully would intend to comply with the zoning ordinance, uh, in terms of the, the look of those signs at the location as they're shown on the plans. If there's any change from doing that, if he wanted to get a larger sign or a more site specific or business specific, uh, a sign, I know there's some talking about utilizing some of his products and, and getting a feature, uh, out there, that he would come back and obviously get that approved and get a, an appropriate building permit at that time. So signage is proposed, but it, but in no way non-performing to any of the ordinances outlined. The, uh, equipment storage, uh, again, is, is, uh, a, a little gray, unfortunately. So the, the, you know, the intent of installing the barn is to install us to, to put his equipment in. That's, that's why it's being built. That's fully the intent that he's moving forward with. Uh, it, it is a lumber company, a timber lumber landscape type company. Uh, there is certainly uh, a, a possibility that equipment and, and tools will be staged at various locations on the properties doing that work. So, um, you know, I, I, I think that's the intent for the gravel areas, that it's going to have construction equipment, but the long-term storage or vending vehicles are having, you know, doing work outside, uh, equipment, work on equipment outside is not the intent. You know, the, the, the barn is a substantial barn is being constructed for the purpose of putting stuff inside. He wants to protect his equipment. So again, hopefully that's clear. In regards to the driveway, uh, we fully recognize that, uh, I, I, the intent on the plans was for the center line of that driveway to be at 12%. That is a, in fact, a steep driveway if that was the only access to this site. You know, I, I think we would, uh, give more consideration to doing much more extensive earthwork and alterations. But because of the type of vehicles that are going to enter it, sawmill, construction, you know, larger vehicles, uh, work equipment, uh, we, we felt like that, and, and because there was a, a clear connection between the property into the paved entrance, the main entrance that's been there for, you know, 40 plus years, that, that, that slope is sufficient for, for the intended use. So, um, you know, hopefully Steve agrees with that. Uh, if that's not the case, we can look at doing additional earthwork and flattening it out. But certainly Jad is, is, we, we've had that discussion. And, and he believes from his standpoint for his business that, that that slope is not an impediment that, that would cause him, you know, significant, uh, issues. Uh, and then lastly, I think, uh, that in regards to the drainage, I, I think all those points were well taken, uh, in, in terms of the existing culvert. That culvert is, is, um, not functioning well. It's, it's a little unclear exactly when it was installed with the, with the highway construction. I think it's been modified, a couple of, not modified, but, but the, the work for the Enchanted Forest has changed pattern somewhat over the years. Uh, there's some old information that contradicts what, what we've seen out there today. Uh, the intent for the project was to put a similarly sized culvert on, on the, the project property so that the, the, um, crossing of vehicles could occur from one side to the other under all conditions. So, uh, it, there's no intent, certainly no intent to change flow patterns. Uh, as he's, as he's indicated, we had, uh, gone to pretty extreme measures to try and improve the situation out there and comply to the current standards. Uh, this project is not a redevelopment, so effectively, you know, the, the drainage system that's proposed out there needs to comply as though that's a wooded lot now. So, uh, I, I would agree with Steve's, uh, uh, summary that it is, should be a pretty significant improvement in terms of water quality and frankly runoff control during normal events. Uh, there, there is a channel protection standard now introduced, which, uh, effectively requires holding back a, a very significant volume of water that's going directly discharging now. So, um, in any case, we, we, we believe that's a, a, an improvement. In terms of resolution and moving forward, I, you know, we have looked, carefully at all these items and, and had prepared a response. But through discussions with, with Talia, uh, uh, understand now that the, the intent is to talk through any of those issues. Uh, I think we're well versed on them and can, can, can answer questions that the board might have. Uh, we also, uh, as you may recall from, it's been a couple of minutes, months since we last met uh, on the DPR, uh, in front of the board. Uh, we'd had sit walks with a number of the board members, uh, uh, and had discussions, uh, specifically the ones that I think, stand out in my mind was it was raised by somebody on the board that, uh, if there was an opportunity to increase of the, uh, uh, landscape area between the highway and the parking field, uh, I, I think I, I certainly indicated to that member at the sidewalk, but, but, you know, we'll save for the, for the full meeting. That change can certainly be made. Um, there is no substantive impact to the, the infrastructure that's being installed, the location of the buildings, the size of the drainage system, that's the size of the septic system, the amount of water used, et cetera. Uh, it, it's just a function of catching up and making sure the plan reflects that, uh, accurately. Uh, we, we have already made, we, we have been able to make those changes. We're hopeful not to, uh, cause an additional delay while that gets reviewed or, or to restart things. So, um, you, you know, the commitment is obviously there to provide that additional landscape buffering. Uh, in regards to the landscape ordinance, I, I think because of the type of use and the type of the property, you, you know, it's an existing parking field. There were adding a couple of trees, the six trees might, sounds like about. it's an existing parking field. There were adding a couple of trees. The six trees might, sounds like about the right number that we were putting in. Uh, but there are a lot of vegetated areas there. The types of use don't really lend themselves to shrubbery around the base of the building. Again, it's an, an equipment barn at the, you know, 200 feet from the, from the road, et cetera. Um, uh, and the other building, I think that, that might, maybe if not require might warrant some additional, uh, shrubbery or landscaping is the, um, uh, the, the, uh, garden center. I think by the nature of the products that, that, that the, um, building is going to have, uh, you know, there's about 60 feet of, of overgrown area between the road and the building. And then there'll be product around the front of the building. So landscape material will certainly be there. Uh, but it'll more than likely be for sale rather than be planted and try and enhance to foundation plantings alike. So, uh, we're, we're certainly willing to work, uh, with, uh, the, the board on that. If, if you feel additional landscaping is required, I, I think, uh, Mr. Anderson's intent is without question to do a high quality design. I think he's, you know, tried to describe the type of building that's gone out there. We've got some initial, uh, um, at least massing diagrams from the architect to talk about what those buildings and, and what, what's going to go on out there. Again, I think, uh, Mr. Anderson is clearly here to answer questions you have and trying to describe, uh, in any way that's helpful to the board, uh, to get those points across. So, uh, I think I touched everything. Uh, you know, we, we have no objection to any of the, uh, you know, with the exception of the clarifications that I've made with adhering to all those recommendations from Crossman. Uh, as well as with the, the, uh, questions raised by the board in terms of, 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 of pushing the facility back a little bit farther from the street. So, that's, that's the 10,000 foot. I know we've got another round. It appears we have another round to go through. Uh, we're, we're happy to take any additional recommendations or input and try and incorporate it and get back, you know, with, with a complete package that addresses everything. Um, you know, we, we are ready and willing to, to, to put forth the project, uh, that the town wants to see at this location.
Thank you.
I do, uh, as a, just kind of a final note, I do have access to the updated drawings as well as any specific technical information. If that's helpful for the board. So if you wanted to see the, the landscaping that was shown, uh, we, oh, the last item I didn't touch on was the permitting. As an, as an update, uh, the, um, OWPS or septic system is in hand, a state curb cut permit is in hand. State wetlands permit is still pending. Uh, it was submitted in early April. So we're up to whatever that makes it almost, uh, five months. Uh, I think you probably recall from our last meeting, we held it for, I think, 10 days while we went back to this board to see, to make sure that there were no changes. So it got submitted in early July as a second submission to the state. So it's, you know, going on, in fact, tomorrow will be two full months on a second submission to the state. They're completely inundated, uh, and you know, the new regulations have, have certainly slowed the permitting process through that group.
Hey, thank you. Board members, discussion, questions for the applicant? Anything at all? I see no response. Hey, our agenda says that we have the ability now to discuss, consider and possibly vote on the development plan review application at this meeting. Yeah, discussion portion was pretty quiet.
I guess it's a clarifying question. So is the next step that these recommendations from Crossman and other recommendations that the board made, for example, during the sidewalk, in the process of being incorporated into the revised plan and that's going to be presented to us at a future meeting? Is that where we are?
I believe we are. Is that correct, Talia?
Yes.
Nice, one word answers.
Wonderful, yes.
Okay, planning board, what's your pleasure?
So given that we don't really have a decision before us and we just appreciate that update, we'll make a motion to, well, first I guess maybe we ask the applicant, um, if we could continue this, um, what are we actually doing here? The development plan review to a future meeting, for example, the November 2nd, 2022 meeting.
Okay, that's, that's your motion?
No, I'm asking the applicant, I guess, if that's okay. Will they be ready by November 2nd?
Mr. Anderson or Mr. Hemroy?
Uh, I, I, I believe we are, you know, we are ready to submit tomorrow. Uh, frankly, uh, you know, the, the information went back to Crossman that would, that, you know, if he concurs with it, uh, you know, for over a week now, sooner the better. So, um, you know, if that's the nearest date, uh, would the board consider, uh, acting on it with the condition that, that we resolve all these items to the satisfaction of staff? Just trying to notice, I noticed you mentioned earlier about trying to lighten your schedule.
Yeah, I don't think that we're ready today to make a decision. And we just had a previous discussion about our October agenda being already quite full, um, which is where my suggestion from the November meeting came from. That would be the earliest.
It's the board's prerogative to pick a date if based upon the information I've given you, you think that October would be too full. If you, if you want to try and squeeze it in in October, you can attempt to do that. If you think that it would be better suited for November, you can do that as well. As long as you have the acquiescence of the applicant.
I would just hate to see Mr. Anderson come back. He would be behind the ones we already have. And it looks like it's going to be such a full meeting that they might prepare to come and be pretty much wasting their time, not being able to get their views out and get, you know, the proper time that should be allotted to them. So I think, you know, the November one would be pretty much the earliest we could handle it.
Okay. Oh, if, if I may, this is Steve Cabal from Crossman. I, I did have a chance, even though I was away to quickly look at the, the reply that Garofalo provided. And I will say that 99% of the technical issues have been, have been addressed. There's just a couple of minor items. I, I believe what, um, Sam would like feedback back on is the board's opinion as to the landscape set back in the front, because that would have the biggest impact on this reply.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cabral.
What was the reply to the landscaping? Comment?
So the board has, so what happened was we received this most recent communication from Crossman. Frankly, I was not expecting to have the applicant turn around their response so quickly. So they put something forth. And I said, oh, hold on, hold on. I want to make sure that I can review this before I give it to the board. So hold off on presenting this information that you've put forth in response to this memo. So at the next meeting, the information that is in response to this memo will be given to you, which will include landscape plan, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you, Talia.
So the, so the landscaping plan has already been submitted, Talia? Is that, I understand that correctly?
So it has technically been submitted. I have not yet had the opportunity to review it. I've been kind of focused on other things.
Yep.
General packet. Um, so yes, it has been submitted. Has it been reviewed? No.
So the reason I ask that is, is Mr. Chairman, I, I could commit to giving you a draft motion subject to amendment at the meeting as we've done. You know, I give you a skeleton and then you can add to it as necessary. Um, and I, I'd be willing to commit to that for your October meeting if that helps move things along.
Yeah, it's fine with me. Board members?
Hey, we have a recommendation from the planner to move to November. While I appreciate that the applicant would like to do something sooner, the pattern is full. Why are we? I don't understand why we're deliberating.
As, as I stated, I, I feel the same way. I mean, it's, that's going to be a big meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love, I'd love to get this in in October for him, but, uh, listen, I, I'm prepared to go with the planner's recommendation.
I don't know if I necessarily made a recommendation that it should be in November. I don't think I stated that, but.
You got two big applications in October.
Yeah.
Plus one small one.
Plus one small one, which is.
Well, whatever the board likes to do, that's what we'll do.
You always have the option for a special meeting. No, we don't. No, we don't.
I, I think without rushing everything, I think it's in the applicant's best interest that the board be able to, uh, review this in November. I know you guys are ready to go. You've got your rockets fired up.
Chad, I think, I, I think that takes you, but, um, I agree to move to that date.
Okay, great. So I'll make a motion that we continue this development plan review for the Anderson mixed use to our, uh, November 2nd, 2022 meeting at 7:00 PM in town council chambers.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Perowitz, yes?
Light, yes.
Lindler, yes.
Shamshini, yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda. Preliminary plan, public hearing, brushy brook. Does anybody require a little bit of a break before we continue? Meredith, how are you doing?
Starting.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Just want to give everybody the opportunity. Looks like we have a volunteer. It's like she's still going home.
Yeah, that was.
She did a terrible job. She doesn't know what she's doing. She didn't even know she had to like talk about the company. Think I was just caught on the mic saying she did a terrible job. These, these, these are on. These are all hot mics.
Anything that is said here will be across the whole town by the time I get home.
Well, I'm in trouble then.
Where's a good place to put the easel if, just if we need something to point to? There's a spot that is okay.
Maybe I'll take a little walk too while we have the opportunity. Looks like we're going to be here for a while. We board on an extension right away, huh?
Um, no later than 10:30. I'm sure no later than 10:30.
Yeah, none of that 10:15 stuff like last time. It was a good, it was a good idea.
I tried.
Right.
I did not get through all of these.
Would it make sense to be kind of here and then the person can talk to it right here? They can kind of see it. The camera can kind of see it.
I agree.
Right? Spend the time frame trying to read all that stuff on a holiday weekend.
Spend the timeframe trying to read all that stuff on a holiday weekend.
And its capability to service that phase and that that protocol that was developed and presented to you would be applied on a phase by phase basis, in some cases maybe multiple phases at a time. But in all, in all events, on that principle, prove it to us and then final approval will be available or at least accommodated for, for a particular phase. And the, the testing protocol involved really two aspects. One, a, a deep geotechnical divide, dive into the aquifer itself, drilling underground cameras analyzing where the fractures are in the bedrock, followed by actual pumping tests with measuring devices in the wells of the surrounding neighborhood homeowners to very aggressively pump the well and test whether it has any impact, whether there's any hydraulic impact between the well field that's the well that's being tested and the adjoining properties wells. And if there is an impact, what that impact is and what it tells us about what, what the consequence of that well would be on the proposed development associated with that well and on everybody else in the surrounding area. So that, even though that was designed to be carried out as part of the final plan stage of review, the protocol was proposed in writing and through testimony to be established as a condition to a preliminary plan approval, but actually carried out before final plan. We actually got started on that protocol, carrying it out for the first phase, right after that meeting in January. It has been extensive work done out on the site. And the, the Mr. Ferrari, although the, the actual pumping has not started yet, for reasons that Mr. Ferrari will explain, there are very encouraging, very encouraging signs from what's been done so far with respect to the first step along this protocol. So with that introduction, I would ask Bob Ferrari to reintroduce himself and bring you up to date on where we stand on the whole business of water availability analysis.
This is a public hearing. I believe Mr. Ferrari has already sworn in.
Yes, he was.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Robert Ferrari. I'm the president of Northeast Water Solutions in Exeter, Rhode Island. I'm a registered professional engineer and certified public water system operator in the state of Rhode Island. I've been retained by the developer to assess water quality and water availability for the project. And Attorney Landry has already briefed you a bit on that. And I made a brief presentation back at the June meeting. What we've done since then is we performed geologic investigations and onsite evaluations that included a review of, you know, looking at the actual site, literally on the ground, reviewing geologic mapping, soils mapping, groundwater mapping, looking at any number of historical evaluations reports. We also reviewed the well logs for close to 100 wells, bedrock wells that are drilled in the area. We compiled this, did quite a bit of other work, a lot of aerial photography work. And in this, this drawing, and I apologize, the clarity isn't as good as we'd like, but this is the site. The original area proposed for the well field was over here. These yellow lines here, those indicate what we call lineaments. That's indications of subsurface fracturing and fault lines. And that's going more or less in a predominant direction is southeast to northwest. And then the bedrock is layered and it's in, almost like the pages of a book in layers and there's foliation planes that actually move, extend northeast, southwest. The reason this is important is because these identify areas where we're more likely to find water and transmissive fractures, water bearing fractures in the ground. What we've overlaid on this, and you can see this is principally impacting in the southwest area of the site, the southwest corner. By the way, Brushy Brook comes down here, Die Hill Road is along here, and then Kenny Hill Road, and then up to Woody Hill Road. This area here, you can tell is, is really has minimal opportunity. One of the things that is important here is if you see all these different colored circles, the red, orange, and yellow circles are the higher yielding wells. And you can see an alignment going in this southeast, northwest alignment that is very much coincident with the identification of the lineaments and, and fracture orientation. We identified an initial target area right here that we wanted to put an exploratory well and actually hope to put a couple of exploratory wells in there. I want to stress, these are exploratory wells. We have a long way to go. Going to the other drawing. This is again Die Hill Road here. And for those who are familiar with the area, this is John and Martha Orlandi's property right here. The Heronian property is over here. This is Die Hill Road. The, the entry to the site is immediately west of the Orlandi property. We go up into here, there's an abandoned house over here and right, right in front of that is where we put that exploratory well. This is a 200-foot radius and it's contained within the project site. In drilling this well, the well is 500 feet deep and we hit the initial fractures at about, initial fracture at about 50, 55 feet down. We hit some other smaller fractures, 100 to 200 feet down. And starting at about 200 feet down, we began hitting very significant fractures. About another seven or eight of them all the way down to the bottom of the bore hole. In the drilling process, we have to pump, you know, air blow water out of the bore hole. And as we went drill deeper, more and more water was being extracted out of the bore hole. At the end of the drilling, the driller reported that they thought they had 40 to 50 gallons a minute being pumped out of the well. Now, that doesn't mean the well has an effective yield of 40 to 50 gallons a minute, but that is very promising. Again, we still have a long ways to go. Once the, the driller pulled out, we then did a camera inspection of the bore hole, which confirmed what we had observed during the drilling process. And that's how we were able to log the location of the fractures, the, the bedrock morphology, orientation, the foliation planes, things like that. It was as we had anticipated from the initial investigations and work we had done, investigatory work. Next steps, we have to do a pumping test program. I do have a transducer in that well that went in last week so we could begin doing some very preliminary monitoring. I think it was fortuitous because as many of you I'm sure are aware, we had a rather significant rain event beginning of this week. And it'll be interesting to see what the impact is relative to groundwater elevations in the area. We did, we've contacted 17 neighbors along Die Hill Road, Kenny Hill Road, and Woody Hill Road in this area here, because those are the folks that would be most likely to be impacted in their private wells. We have heard back from five of the 17. You know, we, we have requested their voluntary participation in the pumping test program. We would like to install transducers in those wells. This would be done at no cost to the residents. It's entirely borne by the developer. It does not disrupt the well operation. It maintains the sanitary conditions of the wells. There should be no adverse impact upon the private well or the residents. They, they should be in no way adversely impacted. You want to point out, and Talia and I have had some, exchanged some correspondence, the initial letter that went out, and I do apologize, it had a couple of errors in it as far as the, the name of the town, it said Situate. The reason is because I was sending out letters on three projects in the span of two days. And unfortunately, in the modern day of word documents and cutting and pasting, I, I missed that on the proofreading. The letters went out, it was called shortly thereafter by one of the neighbors. And it was pointed out, and within an hour of that phone call, we had reissued corrected letters to the same 17 homeowners. And we've had acknowledgements from quite a few of them that they've received the letter. We're encouraging everyone to participate. I know there's reluctance on the part of some of the neighbors. My, my view, and I have had extended conversations with several, is that you really have nothing to lose and everything to gain. The more participants we have, the better and more extensive the information we'll have that enables us to make the best decisions regarding potential adverse impacts on neighboring wells. The pumping test program must be done in accordance with Rhode Island Department of Health and Rhode Island DEM regulations and requirements. These would be public drinking water wells that are under the regulatory oversight of Department of Health as public wells. The groundwater extractions are under the regulatory oversight of DEM. Any well in the state of Rhode Island that proposes to extract 10,000 gallons a day or more out of the ground must go through the DEM groundwater withdrawal program. And that's, it's very extensive and explicit testing requirements to demonstrate whether or not you're having any impacts on wetlands, watercourses, underlying aquifer and water resources, neighboring wells, et cetera. And it's a, the pumping test program would be conducted for a minimum of 72 hours continuously, and that's following some pre-test work. The program will include pre-test monitoring, which we initiated last week. We will be installing more pezometers in wetlands and transducers and hopefully in some neighboring wells, starting next week. We're going to do a pre-test monitoring period, then we'll go through an active pumping test phase, and then a recovery monitoring phase for an extended period of time. We want to establish existing baseline conditions. We want to establish what happens when we're pumping. The pumping test will be conducted at a rate in excess of the anticipated maximum daily demand of the 100% buildout of the site. That's 140 houses. And then we look at the post-pumping phase to see if we return to original baseline conditions or if there are any other effects. There will also be a water quality monitoring program. Everything, including all the precursor geologic investigations, all the basis work will be presented in a very detailed report, as well as the findings of the pumping test program, all the assessments, the evaluations, findings, and conclusions. I'm not, I can't prejudge what, what the findings might be. I'm not in the business of, you know, making predictions without sufficient basis. So the, the testing program will define what the findings are. That's the summation for the time being. If you have any questions or comments, I'll certainly do my best to, to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions for Mr. Ferrari?
Yeah. Mr. Landry said the well testing is going to be done with each phase. And you just suggested that it was going to be done for the entire development.
The original concept assumed that they would work in increments of roughly 20-house phases, so seven 20-house phases, 140 houses, and develop one or more wells to support each phase. Because we have been able to get an initial exploratory well that seems to have, by all indications, a fairly substantial yield. Now, we haven't got an explicit determination of what the effective yield is. That's the purpose of the pumping test program. We believe that this can enable us to evaluate both a, a lower yield program as well as a maximum yield pumping program. And we think it's in the best interest of the community, the neighbors, and the developer. If we have the opportunity to do a pumping test program at the maximum extraction rate based upon the projected water demands for 100% development, that's in the best interests of, of all parties involved here, because we're looking at the true long-term worst-case scenario as far as water extractions and potential impact. As opposed to simply saying, okay, what's the water extractions for a 20-house phase? Okay, or, or the first two phases or something like that. We can look at, we can, we'll do our best to evaluate that for the maximum water demand scenario. So, which is maximum impact.
This was an exploratory well.
That's correct.
So the placement of the well is not where the well is going to be?
No, the placement of the well could be where ultimately an approved public well is, but we, if, if this well proves to be successful, and by successful, it has an effective yield that is, meets the developer's requirements, either for supporting one or more phases of construction, if not the entire construction, and there's no adverse impacts, okay? We have to go back through the Rhode Island DEM permitting, review and approval and permitting process, and the Department of Health process. Only after we have those approvals can that become a public well. Until such time as it's an approved public well, it's an exploratory well.
Okay, so I would think the objective would be that that would be the well for at least that first phase of development, is that?
Presumably that would be the case. I would suggest strongly though that as a community public water system, which is what this would be when it's developed, you want to have a minimum of two wells. So ultimately, there would be more wells. We are attempting to get one or two more exploratory wells drilled. Right now, the, it's very difficult to get a well driller, because we've been in a severe drought, as I'm sure everybody's aware. We've been in a drought for about six months. Despite the heavy rains the last couple of days, we're still, you know, most of the state's still in a drought condition. Lots of wells are having problems and every well driller and well services company in Southern New England has been inundated with, you know, emergency phone calls from folks whose wells aren't functioning correctly or failing, and they have to respond to that so on. You know, for better or for worse, you know, we're, you know, I'm doing a little bit of grovelling right now with, with some of my well driller friends. And, and we have good relationships with them and they'll, you know, just for what it's worth, this well got drilled because I got a call about eight o'clock on Wednesday night a few weeks ago. And I said, listen, we can get, we can get a rig out there tomorrow morning. We gotta, we got a project done early. We got another drill, drilling project done early. We got a day open tomorrow. And I just said, go. I got a stake in the ground drill. I'm sorry.
How did you select the location?
We selected the location based upon the, the geology research we had done, which by the way, included literally looking at, at outcrops and things. We're reading angles and of foliation and fracturing and landforms. There's actually, there's a certain amount of art and a certain amount of, of science and engineering in that. And we looked at, say, the surrounding wells, and we, and we found the, the coincidence of high-performing wells aligned very much with what we saw for the lineaments and foliation patterns in the bedrock. That south, let me flip this over. This area of the site is another critical factor. The vast majority of the site is pretty much covered with glacial till. This area of the site, and, and it extends into further out, you know, into, you know, into Hopkinton here, to the northeast, is glacial outwash, Santa Gravel. Santa Gravel is very, very transmissive. You get a lot of recharge. So that, that recognition that we had soil types very conducive to recharge, and we have bedrock that is very conducive to being recharged and the transmitting water, that indicated this was the area to go. Okay? Now, this specific location was selected as it was right there in our target zone, but I also met my protective setback criteria, which is a minimum of 200 feet from boundaries. Okay? And it was also a relatively open and accessible area. Drill rigs are, they weigh about 60,000 pounds. They're very top-heavy, which means they can be unstable, and you need pretty, pretty solid, relatively flat ground to get in. And that was an area we had available. And so we wanted to minimize disturbance. DEM would, even though it's exploratory work for a drinking water supply, DEM would be less than totally thrilled if, if we got a, an excavator or bulldozer out there and decided to just plow our way through the wetlands or something like that, that wouldn't go over too well. So it was an accessible area. It, it met, met critical setback criteria, and it was in our target, in our preferred target zone based upon everything we knew at that point in time. The well got drilled and based upon the findings of the drilling and the findings of the camera inspection of the well, it's so far, it's been a good call on that. Details to be filled in with a very extensive pumping test program.
So where the proposed well was going to be on the plan set that we've been provided?
That was over here. That was in this, that was in the eastern portion of the site, in this general area. As you can see from our, from just the, just these, the line showing here, this is not, I'm not suggesting you can't get water there, but you're much more likely, if you drill wells, you'll get wells doing two gallons a minute, three gallons a minute, five gallons a minute. You're very unlikely to get wells that are pumping even 10 or 15 gallons a minute, let alone 20 or 30 or 40 gallons a minute.
So the question is, how does that well fit into the plans that we've been reviewing? Because now you've moved it and there's impact to the proposal that we've been looking at. For instance, what was there before you put your well on the plan set?
What was there? And Eric can probably come on, comment on this a little better than I can, but the most that was there was, I believe, either some stormwater control basin, or perhaps we were starting to impinge on an area where there was onsite wastewater disposal leach field. Okay? So that would probably require some review and modifications of that portion of the site design. This is kind of what it comes down to. And Attorney Landry alluded to this, not trying to be flippant, but I've been telling a lot of folks this for the better part of the last 45 years. If you don't have water, you don't have a project. You got to go where the water is. And that's where the water is on this site, in any appreciable quantity.
I also feel like maybe the well testing should have been done before the plans were put together, because now it's some engineering work that you have to take into consideration. Like, where's the septic?
Well, the, again, there wasn't one septic system. There was, you know, numerous septic systems, so there'll have to be, my, my estimation, and again, I'm not designing the septic systems for this project, that's not my area of expertise. I know enough to be dangerous in that area. I imagine there'll probably have to be some adjustments made in the design in that, that area of the site, not the entire site, but that area. Again, that's, that's part of the overall valuation. I've been involved with the project since the end of May, and we were brought in to, to find water and perform pumping tests.
And you found water? Great.
So far.
Last question is, there were seven wells proposed?
Mm-hmm.
And where else would you put them?
Well, again, you can, depending on what we get for yields, we're, we're going to look in a pattern in this area. We've got another promising area up here, okay? That's just to the east of the existing access road going in. But again, this could have some impact relative to the site development design. My intent is to focus principally in this area, because I believe it's the most, most productive area, and look at probably ultimately a two or three well pattern in there. And again, when you, when you design a community public water system, if, say it's a, if you, if you have two wells, you, you want to have them, you know, one well handles the requirements, the second well is a redundant source, and you can alternate. If it's a three-well design, typically you need two wells and you have the third well as your backup capacity and you kind of, and you alternate those wells in a sequence. But again, there's a lot of details that have to get filled in here. The pumping test program is going to be critical here for, for everybody.
I'm not going to ask you any more questions.
I can ask you one. What's the possible distance between where the well is and the furthest house on the project?
The furthest house on the project site? Or the furthest neighboring house? On the project site, realistically speaking, we're going to, we're going to be several hundred feet away from the nearest, from the nearest house. We, I mean, we have to keep, these are bedrock wells, so at the minimum, the Department of Health requirement is a 200-foot protective setback. By the way, that doesn't have to be 200 feet from the property line, but it has to be 200 feet from contaminant threats. And a house is considered a contaminant threat, as well as, say, the septic system, or if you have a stormwater basin or things like that. Now, DEM has put further constraints on the project that they want us 200 feet setback from property lines and also from a water course such as Brushy Brook. So we meet that criteria at this point in time, and we're cognizant of that. You know, I mean, we have to go back to DEM at some point, but we, we want to minimize, you know, the, the level of decision-making that'll have to be done. So we try to conform as much of their requirements as possible while we meet the criteria for groundwater withdrawals.
Okay, Mr. Ferrari, we're coming up on 10:25.
Uh-oh.
I don't want to cut you short, but...
No, it's all right. I appreciate the time.
Sure. Bob, question for you is, in regards to maintenance, is, would these be, the maintenance for these be delegated to the homeowners association in this?
Well, typically, well, number one, as a public water system, they will be, they'll be under the regulatory oversight of Department of Health.
Right.
They are required to have a certified public water system operator. And there's other requirements as far as having operational plans, management plans, proper funding, okay? Reserve funds, et cetera, et cetera. They have to demonstrate the financial capability. So realistically speaking, that ultimately would be part of the responsibility of, presumably if it's a homeowners association, I'm, I'm making an assumption that that's what, what the direction they'd be going in here. But, but, but it has to be done, you know, they have to bring in a, a public water system operator, what all of that entails, okay? And operate in conformance with all the requirements of Department of Health. And they're pretty extensive requirements, by the way.
Yeah. Thank you.
Did you say expensive?
No, extensive. Well, depending on who they bring in, it could be expensive, but they're extensive.
Same thing.
Okay, board members, if we have nothing else for Mr. Ferrari?
Very enlightening.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir. We have someone in the audience who has a question.
Could you please approach the mic and state your name for the record? It's just, it's important that your name and your comments are put on the record.
Come to the mic.
Thank you.
The other side. Joe Caprabo, 45 Woody Hill Road.
Thank you.
Where is, I see where you have, you have test wells. Where is Die Hill?
Die Hill Road is, is right here. This is, literally, it's right here. The access in here is from Die Hill Road.
It's right there.
So it's the southern boundary of the site, it's Die Hill Road.
Okay, your first test wall is by the old abandoned house in there on the left hand.
Yeah, right near, yes, that's correct.
So that's where you're going to concentrate and then maybe up there.
This is a, a secondary area we're considering.
Thank you, everyone.
I think that's about as far as we could go, Mr. Chair, tonight.
Could you just approach the mic, Mr. Landry? Thank you.
Probably, that's probably all we could do tonight. We've got, we have to defer to the...
We've got, we have to defer to the administrative subdivision, and I think it's probably not a good idea to ask to be on the October agenda.
No.
While it's available, and if it's available, we'd very much like to, like to have a good slot on the November agenda, if we could.
That would be for Talia to answer. She has the scheduling pretty much under control.
November is better than October.
Okay, that being settled.
Okay.
You would agree to a November...
Yeah, absolutely. On the record, I confirm in behalf of the applicant that the time for the board to act on the application will be extended until at least the end of November.
So the November planning board meeting date is the 7th of November, so I'd suggest that you continue this to that date, and then have the extension included in that, but I just wanted to have it so you can set a date certain. So anyone out there in the public who has concerns or questions would know exactly when this would next be appearing.
Okay. So I move that we extend the preliminary plan, public hearing for Brushy Brook, to the November 7th.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Second, sorry. I thought it was from before.
Sure.
The November 2nd to 2022 Planning Board Meeting at 7:00 PM in the Town Council Chambers, and to also extend the review timeline for this project to November 30th, 2022.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Second. We have a motion and a second. Prelitz, yes. If that's agreeable with Mr. Landry.
It is, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Light, yes.
No, yes.
Shomshini, yes.
Yurio, yes. Motion carries. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To reiterate, that was the second, I might have said seventh, but second, two.
All right, administrative subdivision. This is Planner's Report, right?
Yeah. New business done.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Solicitors' report, no.
New business, we have none. Solicitors' report.
Nothing for this evening.
Nothing for this evening. Okay, Planner's Report.
There was an administrative subdivision that was for Bruce Brayman and Brayman Builders. A lot line, well, a boundary line was shifted between two properties. Parcel 1, which was originally 492,228 square feet, became 501,074 square feet. Parcel B, which was originally 1,700, 174,240 square feet, became 163,337 square feet. So that's that on that.
Okay, thank you, Talia. Correspondence and updates?
We did not have any.
Public forum. There's no public left. Joe?
There is a member of the public who's raised their hand online.
Okay.
It's, it's your prerogative. Do you want to hear from Joe or the person in the audience first?
Yeah.
The virtual audience.
To be brief, because of the time.
All right. Want to read off the last four digits of your phone number? After that, please unmute yourself and state your name for the record. Last four digits, 1701.
Good night, Meredith.
You've been unmuted. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Sheri Aronian, Die Hill Road. Can you hear me okay? Yep. Um, just, just, I don't know if this can be, you know, answered quickly in public forum, if the developers, engineers are there, just there. I just have two quick questions.
They actually just left. You're welcome to ask for questions, and I can have them try to respond to them, but they're, they're no longer in the audience, if you were expecting, like, a response.
Yeah, yeah, it would, it would have to be something that they would have to answer. I can certainly ask them, and if it's, if you're not able to get the answer, it's fine. I can ask it at the November meeting, but since I'm here already. Just wondering, on the pump test, how many gallons a day they will be pumping to check for yields, water yields? I seem to remember somewhere in the plans, I want to say, I saw 64,000 gallons a day. They're trying to simulate the entire development, or if they're just trying to simulate part of the development, don't quote me on this, it could be 10,000 gallons a day. I'm just curious to the number and what number of houses they're trying to simulate in that pump test.
All right, are those your only two questions? Do you have anything else?
Well, yep, and then part B was, how close is the exploratory well to our property line, that's just flat 2020? I'm sure, you know, the, I don't know if the, the water engineer can, can answer that. It might have to be deprey. I'm not sure, based on the scale of their map. I don't think it depicted yet, but I would be curious to know how close that well is to our property line.
I think you said it was greater than 200 feet, but I, I don't know that specifically.
That was my recollection. That's the regulatory setback.
Do we have a number, or, you know, was it 300 feet, or, I was just curious?
No. No, we were just told greater than 200.
Okay, okay. We'll see if we can maybe get them to buckle that down a little closer, just, just so we know. What's that?
Those are only the test wells. Those aren't the actual wells.
He's inclined to leave.
I think this one could potentially be, I think, I could be mistaken, but I thought he said it could potentially be a permanent well, if it works the way they'd want it to.
Yes.
But maybe I misunderstood that. Did I misunderstand that?
No, you're right.
He did, he did say that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it's exploratory in the nature that they're still testing it, but it potentially could be a permanent well.
Yes. He's inclined to like that space that, that test well is in.
Right, based on the location.
Yeah. We'll see.
Yeah, very good. Like I said, I just, you know, Talia, I don't want to add to your workload. I know you have a ton going on. I can certainly ask these at the November meeting. Don't feel like you have to solicit answers to these comments if they've already walked out the door, so no problem for me to ask them again in November.
Okay. Thank you.
But since I was already on the phone, I think I might as well. Anyway, that's the question, but like I said, don't, don't add that to your, to your load. I will, I'm more than happy to ask it in November, when they're there.
All right, do you have anything else?
Thank you. I don't, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, could we have a motion to close our meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Prelitz, yes.
Light, yes.
Light, yes. Thank you, everyone. See you next month.
Be sharing with me. Good night, Al.
I'm all.